During the hearing, we were given the application of Kevin Lewis against the red car he had been by a council and his similar behaviour.
Yes, my lord.
Please, my lord.
My lord, this morning I aim to try and deal with the remainder of what I have to say in less than an hour and a half, to be followed if your lordship agrees by my learned friend, Mr Stuart Smith.
Yes.
Leaving, I hope, sufficient time for Miss Crale to deal with what she has to say and also for Mr George to reply.
Yes, thank you very much.
And do I take it, my lord, that although your lordship, I think, has given indications that you would like us to try and finish, if possible, by lunchtime, if we go beyond lunch, that will nevertheless be acceptable?
Yes, of course, yes, I do what you can.
Are you going to whet our appetite by telling us how you're going to divide up the topics between you and Mr Stuart Smith?
No, my lord, I'm not.
So we don't know whether to ask you a question, because it may be that he's going to deal with it?
Well, my lord, I doubt if your lordship would be in any way inhibited from asking a question.
You're probably right, but we don't get a stare at all.
It's a way to see how you get on. Anyway, let's make progress and keep us in suspense.
I want to, I'm going to be dealing with four topics, though.
Right.
Some introductory remarks, I want to look at some consequences in some detail of this appeal being allowed.
This is the interoram argument, is it?
I'm sorry, my lord.
The interoram argument? Interoram? I mean, you're suggesting this...
No, it won't be interoram, it will be principled, I hope, but it will be dealing with consequences.
Yes.
And I want to explore that in a little bit of detail, if I may, and then, my lord, just, I said four, but really the last topic will be to say something very briefly about issues two and three. The introductory remarks are these, my lord, for four points. We've never really come across a case like this before, where you've had such extensive use of the land, both by the landowner and by the users. So to that extent, your lordships are in new territory. Secondly, although there is no authority other than the recent Field Common case which supports what we are arguing, we have found no case which supports what Mr George is arguing directly, to say that it is impossible for your lordships to uphold the argument that we are seeking to advance in this case. My lord, the third point is this, that nothing in the statute, your lordships find at page 274, in the appendix, it's at tab 12, page 274, the Commons Act 2006, says anything about interruption or actually enjoyed. It's all, therefore, loaded onto the phrase, "where a significant number of the inhabitants of any locality have indulged as of right" in Lawful Sports and Pastimes. It's an unfortunate word that the draft's been used, indulge. When I say user as of right, and when Lord Justice Dyson spoke of user as of right, he was obviously referring to indulging as of right within the meaning of the Commons Act. If your lordship just turns back, first of all, to page 260, to the Prescription Act of 1832, section two, the familiar lines near the bottom of the page, five lines from the top, "when such way or other matter, as herein last before mentioned, shall have been actually enjoyed by any person claiming right thereto without interruption for the full period of twenty years." And then if your lordship turns on to the Highways Act of 1980, at page 271, you see a flavour of that immediately, "where a way over any land, other than a way of such a character that use of it by the public could not give rise at common law to any presumption of dedication, has been actually enjoyed by the public as of right and without interruption." So no such words in the Commons Act of 2006, it's all down to indulging as of right or using as of right.
Well, what about the words "for a period of twenty years"? I suppose you could read into that the concept of interruption.
Well...
Or that it's implied that it is without interruption, I should say.
Your lordship is right, something has got to be read in somewhere, and all we are saying is that there is nothing inconsistent with our argument in reading it into the phrase "indulging as of right", what we are seeking to argue. And, my lord, the fourth introductory point is this, that yesterday I drew on what Lord Hoffman had said in the Sunningwell case, in a passage which I didn't show you, lordships, but it's in volume three, at tab 32, on page 350. His lordship has just been describing various historical developments, and then at letter F on page 350, he says, "the result of these developments was that, leaving aside the cases in which a) it was possible to show that the right could not have existed in 1189, and b) the doctrine of lost modern grant could not be invoked, the period of twenty years user was in practice sufficient to establish a prescriptive or customary right. It was not an answer simply to rely upon the improbability of immemorial user or lost modern grant. As Chief Justice Coburn observed, the jury were instructed that if there was no evidence absolutely inconsistent with their having been immemorial user or a lost modern grant, they not merely could but should find the prescriptive right established. The emphasis was therefore shifted from the brute fact of the right or custom having existed in 1189, or there having been a lost grant, both of which were acknowledged to be fictions, to the quality of the twenty-year user which would justify recognition of a prescriptive right or customary right." And then these words, "it became established that such user had to be, in the Latin phrase, nec v nec clam, nec precario, not by force nor stealth nor the licence of the owner, for this requirement in the case of custom, see the Mills case, and then the unifying element in these three vitiating circumstances was that each constituted a reason why it would not have been reasonable to expect the owner to resist the exercise of the right."
I mean, I have slight difficulty with that bit. I mean, it depends what, of course, is meant by this.
By...
By this, by force.
Yes.
But, I mean, there's, I mean, I think it was hinted by Mr George, that there is an argument, that if you put up a notice...
Yes.
That then anybody who acts in contravention of the notice acts v. Now, to say that it wouldn't expect the owner to resist in a situation where actually he would be resisting, because he would be objecting. I mean, you know, if all that happens is you put up a notice, and that would be enough. If that were an example, and certainly there's an argument to that effect, I mean, I'm not quite sure you could say, well, in that situation, does it make much sense to say the reason why the person doesn't acquire is because you wouldn't expect the owner to resist, when actually the whole point is that the owner is resisting?
No, I understand what your lordship says. Lord, I don't think it's necessary for the purposes of what I'm arguing to, as it were, to disagree with your lordship, because the underlying concept of the reasonableness of the owner resisting the right, if you just concentrate on that and leave aside the possible exception my Lord Roger's just referred to, that's what my ten examples yesterday were driving at. They were designed to show you that there are at least seven other cases, than nec v etc., where as of right goes beyond nec v. And I just want to say one word, if I may, and finish in completing this introductory section, on my fifth example, which was the case of Beresford and the statutory right. Just want to show you, lordships, the Beresford case in volume five, and your lordships will need as well volume four. If you could just begin with volume four, please, and turn to tab 46. Tab 46 in volume four, an extract from the Open Spaces Act of 1906, and I'll just read a short passage from that, "a local authority who have acquired any estate or interest in or control over any open space, a, sorry, I should just, or burial ground under this act, shall, subject to any conditions under which the estate, interest or control was so acquired, a) hold and administer the open space or burial grant in trust to allow and with a view to the enjoyment thereof by the public as an open space, within the meaning of this act, and under proper control regulation, for no other purpose." And then if your lordship turns just to the Local Government Act of 1972, at tab 45, section 122 deals with appropriation of land by principal councils, and it will then turn to the next page for section 123. Subsection 2A provides that a principal council may not dispose under subsection 1 above of any land consisting or forming part of an open space without going through certain procedures. And then 2B, "where by virtue of subsection 2A above, a council disposes of land which is held, a) for the purpose of section 164 of the Public Health Act 1875, or b) in accordance with section 10 of the Open Spaces Act 1906, the land shall by virtue of the disposal be freed from any trust arising solely by virtue of its being held in trust for the enjoyment of the public in accordance with the said section 164, or as the case may be, the said section 10." And in the Beresford case, my Lord Roger and Lord Walker, referring to...
This is tab 59.
It's in tab 59, at volume five, at paragraph 87, I'll pick it up at paragraph 86, I would add that I feel some sympathy for the view taken by the courts below. Lord Justice Dyson in the court below had given a judgment saying that there was an implied permission. "The city council as a local authority is in relation to this land in a different position from a private landowner, however benevolent, who happens to own the site of a traditional village green. The land is held by the city council and was held by its predecessors for public law purposes. A local resident who takes a walk in a park owned by a local authority might indignantly reject any suggestion that he was a trespasser unless he obtained the local authority's consent to enter. He might say that it was the community's park, and that the local authority as its legal owner was, in a loose sense, in the position of a trustee with a duty to let him in." Indeed, that's how Justice Finnamore put it in Hall and Beckenham, "a case concerned with the claim in nuisance against a local authority, the owner of a public park, in which members of the public flew noisy model aircraft." So the notion of an implied statutory licence has its attractions. After that approach had been suggested, there was a further hearing of this appeal in order to consider the effect of various statutory provisions which weren't referred to at the first hearing, including those that I've just shown your lordships, as well as section 19 of the Miscellaneous Provisions Act 76. Where land is vested in a local authority on a statutory trust under section 10 of the 1906 Act, inhabitants of the locality are beneficiaries of a statutory trust of a public nature, and it would be very difficult to regard those who use the park or other open spaces trespassers, even if that expression is toned down to tolerated trespassers. The position would be the same if there was no statutory trust in the strict sense, but land had been appropriated for the purpose of public recreation. I just wanted to show you, lordships, by reference to the actual relevant provisions, how it came about that I gave my fifth example of a case where, although user might have been nec v etc., it still wouldn't have been as of right, because one or other of those possibilities, adumbrated by Lord Walker, had been applied in the case in question. Now, my lord, I turn to my next topic, if I may, that, the subject of consequences, and the first point I want to draw to your lordship's attention is just to remind you, tab 32 of bundle three, of volume three.
So sorry, just, on the three, what?
I'm so sorry, my lord, it's...
Thirty-two.
It's, 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 it's what Lord Hoffman said in...
It must be.
Not in the Sunningwell case, it's fifty, what's that? It's in, it's in volume two, wrong, wrong, volume two, tab 28. Sentence your lordships have looked at again and again, from paragraph 51 of the Oxfordshire case, volume two, tab 28. Picking it up at paragraph 50, "in my view, the rational construction of section 10 is that land registered as a town or village green can be used generally for sports and pastimes. It seems to me that Parliament must have thought that if the land had to be kept available for one form of recreation, it wouldn't matter a great deal to the owner whether it was used for others as well. This would be in accordance with the common law, under which proof of a custom to play one kind of a game gave rise to a right to use the land for other games," and he refers to a passage in the Sunningwell case, and then says this at 51. "This does not mean that the owner is altogether excluded from the land, he still has the right to use it in any way which doesn't interfere with the recreational rights of the inhabitants. There has to be give and take on both sides." But it's the first of those two sentences that I just want to concentrate on, if I may, for the moment.
Well, he still has the right.
Yes, the first of those two sentences.
Well, there are three then.
And I want to, I want to just contrast that first sentence with a second way in which, the matter, in which, if the matter is put in this second way, you will see an immediate inconsistency between the two propositions. Lord Hoffman said, "he, the owner, still has the right to use the land in any way which doesn't interfere with the recreational rights of the inhabitants." And now I invite your lordships to consider this formulation. "The inhabitants have the right to use the land in any way which does not interfere with the owner being able to continue to use his land in the way in which he used it during the twenty-year period."
So are you dictating this, or is there something we read?
This is a second proposition to be set aside, to be set next to...
I know, I know, but are you dictating it? We don't see it here.
Where does it come from?
It comes from me.
Well, can you dictate it then, because you've just read it far too fast?
Comes from me, "the inhabitants..."
Yeah.
"...here's the proposition, 'the inhabitants have the right to use the land..."
Just a little slower, please.
"...in any way which does not interfere with the owner being able to continue to use his land in the way in which he used it during the twenty-year period. The inhabitants have the right to use the land in any way which does not interfere with the owner being able to continue to use his land in the way in which he used it during the twenty-year period.'" Now, those two propositions, that of Lord Hoffman at 51, and the one that I've just put forward, obviously cannot stand together. But I invite your lordships to look and see how the matter was put by Mr Chapman himself in the appendix at tab eight.
Could you, just before you go there, just explain the point you're making? As far as I understand it, you're saying that the owner is confined, then, to the use that he was making during the twenty-year period, and isn't it freedom to expand his use or change his use in some other way?
No, going much further than that. I'm saying that the owner cannot even use the land for the purpose for which he used it during the twenty-year period, if it be the case, as Lord Hoffman says it is, that upon registration, the inhabitants acquire the right to use the land for all manner of lawful sports and pastimes. And my second proposition, which simply cannot stand with Lord Hoffman's formulation, if that's rejected, then another way of rejecting that second proposition is to say, once the land is registered, the landowner is stuck with using the land only in such manner as does not interfere with the activities that the local people choose to...
I mean, all this involves implying into what Lord Hoffman said, the proposition that on registration they get rights to greater use of the site, inconsistent with what hitherto the owner had been doing on it, and I don't see why that is necessarily implicit in what Lord Hoffman says.
Well, my lord, it was what, if you look at, if you look at the questions which were posed for the House of Lords in the Oxfordshire case, you'll find them at paragraph 35, from recollection, on page 692.
Which question is answered in which way to make good that point?
"In view of this conflicting advice," says Lord Hoffman in paragraph 35, "the registration authority applied to the court for directions. It decided that it should also ask for rulings and guidance on various other matters relevant to both whether the land should be registered and what the consequences of registration would be. As a result, Mr Justice Lightman was faced with an application for ten rulings. Ruling one, whether the relevant inhabitants had rights to indulge in lawful sports and pastimes on land which had become a class C town or village green." And Lord Hoffman didn't just answer that, that's the question, that's the relevant question. He didn't just answer that question by saying, "yes, they've got rights." He very helpfully said, "what were the rights which the inhabitants obtained once the land became registered?" And one of the issues...
Where did he say that?
Well, it follows from the way in which he answers the question, in para 50 itself, the one that I've just read you from Oxfordshire, when he says, rejecting the view that the, that the local people should only have the right to use the land for the purposes for which they happened to use it during the twenty-year period, he says, at 50G, "it seems to me that Parliament must have thought that if the land had to be kept available for one form of recreation, it would not matter a great deal to the owner whether it was used for others as well." And so...
Well, with the best of my heart, I can't, I don't understand that to go and make good your proposition. I mean, of course, you know, the mere fact that they played cricket in a particular area, not inconsistent with the golf, doesn't mean that they can't in future get rid of cricket and start rounders, or whatever it is. But it, but it doesn't, with respect, it doesn't, to my mind, it doesn't go as far as to say, and it is no longer relevant, what they were prevented from doing before by the owner's own use of the site.
Well, my lord, if that had been the effect of what their lordships intended to say, it's very surprising that Lord Hoffman didn't say it, because the universally accepted view, until your lordship has put to me the point that you have just put, is that my Lord, Lord Justice Rick summarised the position correctly when he said at paragraph 65, in this case, registration...
Sixty-five of Rick.
Sixty-five of Rick's tab...
Twenty-three of appendix, yeah.
Yeah, tab two, para 65, in my judgment, it's the fifth line, it's just one, one sentence, registration...
Just the same.
I'm sorry, it's tab...
This is paragraph 65, is it?
Yeah, para 65 in...
It's tab two, page 23.
Yeah, at the end, the last page of the tab.
Thank you.
I was going to show you, lordship, this passage next, but it expresses the view which, if correct, is flatly contrary to what my Lord Brown has just suggested. Registration does not confer qualified or limited rights. Registration confers the unqualified right to use the land generally for sports and pastimes. And if it confers that right, and Lord Hoffman said it did, then it follows that everything the landowner might previously have done has got to give way to the exercise by the inhabitants of the right which registration of the land gives them.
Well, I'm not persuaded thus far, I have to tell you. I mean, assume that it had been used, you know, by the owner for the odd, or the regular football match, and then it's registered. Are you testing that the, after that point in time, the local inhabitants, irrespective of a football match going on, can simply brazenly take their dog across the pitch?
Sure. It's, whatever, whatever activities of, I mean, that was why it was such a radical decision. Mr George argued, as energetically as he's argued in this case, that the lordships should not uphold the view that rights attended, land becoming registered as a green. And Lord Scott, even Lord Scott, who was of the view that rights should attend the registration of the land as a green, protested that it would be, I remember him protesting, as all your lordships have heard him protest from time to time, protesting that if it was right, what was being argued by, on behalf of the local inhabitants, by Mr Edwards, if it was right, then exactly the kind of example that your lordship has just given, it would mean that the landowner couldn't carry on, or wouldn't necessarily be able to carry on using the land for the purposes to which he had been putting it during the twenty-year period. And so said Lord Scott, "surely, if there are rights, and I accept there should be, they should be limited to the kind of activities," in these cases usually walking the dog, as it happens in this case not, "the kind of activities which the, which the local people were using the land for during the twenty years, because that would then enable the landowner to continue compatibly with that, to use the land for his own purposes."
Is that your proposition, then, that we should say that it is so limited?
No.
No.
I'm not here to invite your lordships to interfere with anything that was held in the Oxfordshire case.
Because I think what, Lord Hoffman, you, 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 there is a reference, I think, to Sunningwell, and it's the passage that I think you may have had in mind in tab 32 in volume three, at page 357, where Lord Hoffman looks at the common law, and he's saying, "well, in the old days, it may have been people dancing around maypoles and things like that, and one can bring that up to date and include things like frisbees and so on and so forth." Is he really saying more than that, really, that you're not tied to ancient customs, you can use the, the ground for, for sports as they develop?
He said two things. He said that you're not tied to ancient, ancient customs, you therefore can use the land for the whole range of activities which constitutes lawful sports and pastimes, number one. And the second thing that is implicit in that is that the landowner is entitled to use the land for, I'm so sorry, that the local people are being entitled to use the land for that full range of activities.
However inconsistent with everything the landowner's been doing himself during these years.
Yes.
I want you to show me that in a case where it actually makes a hap of a difference to the result of the case.
Well, it would in this case.
Of course it would, yeah. And of cour, I mean, you would be arguing rather differently, if I may say so, Mr Lawrence, if the golf course was still around, you would be saying, "registration carries with it only limited rights, not to interfere." But of course now, it's either development or bust.
No, but with respect, my lord, why? I'd be putting forward exactly the same argu- I'd be putting forward exactly the same argument.
Well, but you'd have a fallback position.
Well, okay, but my argument would be, see what the position is today. If this land is registered as a green, the rights of the landowner to carry on using this land as a golf course have to give way to those of the local people. And it's inevitable, because the way it works is that during the twenty year period, all the deferring got done by the local people to the landowner. Following registration, all the deferring has to be by the landowner in favor of the local people. And Mr George has not argued the contrary. This is the, he has tried to say, fudging, if I respectfully say so, the answer to the questions my Lord, Lord Roger asked him yesterday several times as to what what the landowner would be able to do following registration, that it's all down to give and take. It's not down to give and take at all. It cannot all be down to give and take without holding, as Lord Hoffman did not hold, that if the locals' people's rights had to give way following registration in order to enable the landowner to continue to use the land for the purposes for which he had hitherto used it, then the local people's rights would just have to give way. That was not said, and isn't, and isn't the result of how the House of Lords laid down the position. My Lord, Lord Walker would have said it in agreeing with, I mean, he, in agreeing with Lord Hoffman, those of your lordships who did, would surely have said, if you had intended it to be the case, that the landowner should be able to continue to use the land post-registration for his pre-registration activities, and that the local people's user would have to give way in that situation, it would have been said.
It wasn't relevant in the case.
It was, because one of the-
In which case? In Oxfordshire?
Yes, of course it was, because one of the exam questions which we set was, are there rights? And implicitly, and if so, what rights are there? And it was highly relevant to the arguments which then followed on the other questions that had to be raised, which is why when we were before Mr Justice Lightman, there were fewer questions that were then being posed for the court. But he said, as I recall it, how can I answer these subsequent questions without looking at the question of the Victorian statutes and the fundamental question of whether, following registration, the public would get rights or not? Because it's all keyed in to the question, up to what date you had to prove user as of right and so on and so forth, in a way that I can't immediately recall.
Is there any analogy from the law relating to public rights of way or private rights of way? Because I think the principle is that somebody who has a right of way over land must exercise that right. The Latin word is civilita, but it means in a way that respects the right of the owner. Now, there's nothing in the Act, I think, I'm talking about the two thousand and six Act, which expands on this point. But can't one fall back on the common law approach to easements generally? That those who have the right to an easement must exercise it in a way that respects the position of the owner?
It's just not, it's just not practical. I mean, say you've got land which is used as a golf course, and local people want to take advantage of their right, held by the House of Lords to attend registration of the land as a green, to play football on a Saturday afternoon on the fairway.
But why not? Because we've seen, I mean, over the last twenty years, that's what has been going on, hasn't it? I mean, the-
Not when golf has been played on a Saturday afternoon. The landowner says, I'd like to continue to be able to have my usual golf tournament on Saturday afternoon in the normal way. The local people say, sorry, son, we have the full range of rights to use the land for lawful sports and pastimes. The House of Lords has held that in the Oxfordshire case, and your golf is going to have to give way to our football. It's as simple as that.
Well, Mr Lawrence, just assume that, there it is, the owner hadn't been making any use of it at all. And then after registration, one lot of local inhabitants want to play golf on this trip, and one lot want to play football. I mean, they just have to reconcile, they have to be sensible and accommodate each other. They can't both do the same thing, what they want at the same time.
I don't disagree with your lordship. Another case which will be coming before this house in due course may involve a case of irreconcilable differences-
You've got the biggest growth industry in the land!
Between the users. But unfortunately, for a landowner, I mean, in the case of a difference of view between the local users as to how they might use the land, obviously, it's going to be sensible that the law should be laid down in due course as being that they've got to accommodate their respective rights just as well as they can, and that that's an inevitable result of them all being given the right to indulge in all manner of lawful sports and pastimes. Quite obviously, they cannot all indulge in all manner of lawful sports and pastimes simultaneously, and if there's a dispute between them, it's going to have to be resolved by some common sense method.
I mean, I used to think quite a few members of this golf club were local inhabitants. They've got rights too, as-
My lord, I don't want to forget your point, I'm going to deal with your point. If, and I take the point that your lordship is not currently reading what Lord Roger and Lord Walker and Lord Hoffman said in Oxfordshire, as meaning what Lord Justice Rick thought it meant, and what all the rest of us think it means, but would your lordship just assume that you're wrong about that? And that that is what it means? Okay, you make that assumption. Then your lordship takes my point, that when the conflict arises on a Saturday afternoon, it can only be resolved if the locals insist on having their rights in given effect to, according to the tenor of the House of Lords judgment, it can only be resolved by the golf course packing up and going home. And Mr Justice, I mean, you may say it's only Mr Chapman, but he has got absolutely limitless experience in this field, and is one of the most scrupulous chancery barristers I've ever come across in my life. Mr Chapman says, in the passage that I just wanted to show, a hundred and sixty five, tab eight, in a single crisp sentence.
Hundred and sixty five, yeah.
That- My lord, I'm not sure that I'm going to make good this now.
It doesn't look too late at night for a moment.
That's paragraph four, sub-paragraph four, one, nine, five.
Yes, maybe?
Yes, four.
Yeah.
Well, this is, what he's doing here is stating Lord, Mr Sullivan's reasoning in line. Right or wrong?
No, but I'll have to think about that. I don't, I don't think that this passage from paragraph one hundred and ninety five of what Mr Chapman was saying makes the point in the way that Lord Justice Rick's made it, in the way that I've been seeking to make it up to now.
Can I just ask? On your analysis, Lord Hoffman was saying, where recreational rights were asserted, the landowner's rights must yield. What did he mean in the third sentence of paragraph fifty one, there has to be give and take on both sides?
My lord, I don't know, because because there can't be give and take on both sides consistently with what he said in the previous sentence. And the Fitch case, which he referred to as authority for the proposition, doesn't come anywhere near establishing an authority that, on which your lordships could rely for the purposes of reading him in a way which would result in the position being that following registration, for example of this land, if it was still a golf club, the land could continue to be used for golf in the normal way. It just, it just doesn't.
There wasn't much happening in Oxfordshire on the land, apart from people walking their dogs. And that's, and then in that kind of case, and the haymaking cases, give and take is all right. Your point here is the give and take is terribly difficult to be a basis for a case where one side is running a golf club and wants to have access to use the thing as a golf club all the time, and the other side wants to play football all the time or lots of the time. That's, you say, give and take doesn't solve that kind of problem.
Yes, I mean, I acknowledge that there are cases where at the edges, as it were, you can resolve disputes by recourse to a doctrine of everybody behaving reasonably and so on and so forth. But not in a case like this, and not in this case. And that for the purposes of analyzing the matter, one, your lordships really do need to imagine that the golf was still going on, and this was not a case of a council who had managed to move the first and the eighteenth holes to an adjoining bit of land that they owned, so that the golf club could be reconstructed, and the clubhouse moved across the Majuba Road as well. All that has happened. And now, there's been, there's been a great planning battle, you know, to be able to build much needed extra houses. That's been challenged and been all the way to the Court of Appeal and rejected. What the landowner wants to do is to make good his development agreement, the council wants to make good their development agreement with Miss Crell's clients, so that these houses can be built for the local people, held, no, it's a village green, tough.
What about paragraph fifty three? Of Oxfordshire? Because after looking at Fitch, which you say doesn't help very much, in paragraph fifty three, he refers to Mr George's submissions, and then he he says the primary purpose of the nineteen sixty five Act, as applied to town and village greens, was not to create new rights which overrode those of the owner. And then he goes on to say, it was to create a register, and that would include lands on which customary rights and so on existed, and protecting the interests of both parties. Now, is there a difference between the purpose of the the two thousand, sorry, the nineteen sixty five Act and the act we're dealing with, the two thousand and six Act? Or are the purposes really the same, although the wording obviously differs?
Well, my lord, it's all, it's all part of a continuous development of the law, isn't it? The two thousand and six Act reflects the provisions of the nineteen sixty five Act in the sense that the sixty five Act has a definition, which although that has been adapted and a different method is now prescribed for land to become registered, the essential, the essential underlying point of the sixty five legislation is mirrored in that of the two thousand and six legislation. I mean, what I'm saying to your lordship is that the the effect of how Lord Hoffman expressed himself in paragraph fifty one, however you read it, cannot result in a case like the present, in the landowners' activities being able to continue post-registration in the way that they did pre-registration.
Well, I'm, I mean, the second sentence, he still has the right to use it in any way which doesn't interfere with the recreational rights. That's the recreational rights as they've been enjoyed over the last twenty years. It doesn't mean, which have suddenly become so large as to in fact prevent him still using it as he has done. I just find it difficult, particularly in the context of a case where there wasn't any conflicting-
I don't remember, I don't remember how the argument on this went exactly in Oxfordshire. Miss Crell may do, or Mr George may do, but the, but the it certainly strikes me that you need a rule. And the rule that you need is a rule that tells you what the position is in the event of a difference of view between landowner and local people as to how the land is to be used following registration. And you can't duck it, there's two scenarios. The one is that you say, the local people have got the rights, and the landowner can then still use the land, provided he does so compatibly with that. And if it means giving up his golf course, that's just tough. That's the first possible logical way of dealing with the matter. The other way of dealing with the matter is to say, post-registration, everybody's just got to get on as well as they can, and to leave it to the individual circumstances of individual cases for people to work out what the position is. And of course, you can see straight away that in the case of, in a case like ours, it would be a recipe for continuous dispute and argument as to the point at which the landowner was able to put his foot down and say, this far and no further. I am allowed to continue to do what I previously did to this extent, and the local people might, on the other hand, be saying, but if you do that, you're preventing us from doing all kinds of things that we are meant to be able to have the right to do, and you've just got a recipe for confusion. And so, if your lordships follow Lord Brown's line and interpret the Oxfordshire case as along the lines of the passage my Lord, Lord Hope put to me in paragraph fifty three, so that the rights of the owner to use the land as he previously did remain unimpaired, then you will knowingly be laying down the law in a way which will, I predict, produce a recipe for confusion and for uncertainty in many cases as to how the competing rights of landowner and of local people are to be resolved. And i- if that is a possible way in which your lordships might end up interpreting the speech of Lord Hoffman in Oxfordshire, then obviously my submissions, as they will be continuing from now on, must deal with that as best they can, doing it on my feet as it were, with that possible outcome, to see where, what I have to submit about about, in this case, to see where that leads us, and I'll try and do it as best I can. But I don't think, at the moment, I can take it any further than to say that it is inconsistent with the understanding of the effect of the Oxfordshire case, to say that the landowner would be entitled to insist on continuing to use the land post-registration in the way that he did pre-registration, whatever that might be.
Yes.
My lord, I tried to show your lordships yesterday, and I'm now turning to, as it were, the, what follows from my understanding of the of the consequences of registration, modified where appropriate, I hope, to reflect the possibility that your lordships might end up holding that the landowner does actually retain the right to use the land post-registration for whatever purposes he had previously used it for, even if that means that the public have to continue to give way to him in the way that they previously did. My lord, on the footing that my, my reading of the Oxfordshire case is correct, I tried to show your lordships yesterday that underlying the prescriptive principle was the idea of reasonableness. And the question that I asked was, in what circumstances will it be reasonable to expect the owner to intervene? Not if the use I was submitting yesterday fell into any of the examples which I sought to identify. If I'm right that the unifying element in those illustrations is that in none of them would it be reasonable to expect the owner to dispute or to complain about the activity in question, then it doesn't matter how your lordships get to the position for which we contend, as long as you give effect to the underlying principle. And we suggest that the, what we call the outward appearance test provides a method of arriving at the result for which we contend. Once you concede the idea, the unifying element being the one that I've just put forward, about it being reasonable to ask whether it's reasonable for the landowner to dispute the activity being carried on, once you concede that as the underlying idea, we say it's a rational step to saying that user as of right is user which the owner fails to resist at his peril. It doesn't matter whether the focus is on the word user, or indulge, or on the composite phrase indulge as of right, or just on as of right. or just on as of right. Wherever the focus may lie, the underlying challenge in all the cases is the same, is to lay down the law in such a manner as to ensure that whatever the facts are, that whenever the facts are such as not to make it reasonable to expect the owner to resist the activity, the claimant will fail. And vice versa. Where the facts are such that it is reasonable to expect the owner to resist the activity, then the claim will succeed.
How do you decide? I mean, what is it about this case that means it wasn't reasonable for the golf club to dispute or resist? I mean, most golf clubs wouldn't welcome having to introduce a special rule that you can move your ball when dog turds impede it.
You do it by recourse to the principle Mr Justice Buckley put forward, as he then was in White and Taylor, bundle three, tab four zero, the last tab in bundle three, at page one hundred and ninety-two E G.
Sorry, three, tab forty.
One nine two, letter E.
One nine two.
Yes, I mean, that's a common law rule which he's laying down. What we have here, and you've been referring to some of the words of it, is a formula in the statute.
Yes, correct.
And we're told in subsection four A, it could be two A, it doesn't really matter, that there has to be a significant number of individuals indulging in this right. So that's part of the picture, which matches the common law rule. And then they're indulging in certain things which are then described. And then you've got the formula as of right which you've put forward. So the statute is really putting in statutory language, it might be thought. The concept which the common law has, which is explained in the passage you're taking us to.
Well, my lord, I've got two reservations about that. The first is that the addition of the word significant in my submission was merely put in in the light of the decision in the Oxfordshire case itself, and in Sunningwell, that walking the dog as an activity would do something as informal as that. The word significant was put in to indicate what was always the law, but it's there, as it were, to rub it home, that you need a significant number of dog walkers if you're going to succeed in a case based only on such an activity. And that, I think Mr Justice Sullivan somewhere says that it added nothing to what the position was before the amendment of the nineteen sixty-five Act. It merely expressed what was previously implicit, that just a little user wouldn't do.
Well, that matches the common law point, isn't it? That the user has to be, as is said here, of such a character, degree and frequency as to indicate the assertion of a right.
Just so. And my second point, my second point, my lord, was this. And so therefore, what I'm saying is that the two thousand and six Act did not take the law on in that respect merely because the word significant was used from the position that it had been under the nineteen sixty-five Act itself. But the second point is this, you could have a significant number of local people using the land on a given occasion, a few times in the twenty-year period. The word significant by itself doesn't carry you home when you are considering the global question, the global question posed by section two and section four of the two thousand and six Act, whether there was sufficient user of the necessary quality during the twenty-year period by local people to satisfy the requirement that as set out in the statute of indulging in lawful sports and pastimes as of right. And so, I say that it is helpful to focus on the position as set out by Mr Justice Buckley. If I can just read the passage very quickly, my lord, at letter E F on page one ninety-two, to make good a prescriptive claim in this case. It isn't necessary for the claimant to establish that he and his predecessors have exercised the right claimed continuously. This is a profit of a kind that of its nature would only be used intermittently. Flocks would not, for instance, be on the down at lambing time or for twenty-four hours of the day, or very possibly on every day of the week or all round the year. But, the user must be shown to have been of such a character, degree and frequency as to indicate an assertion by the claimant of a continuous right and of a right of the measure of the right claimed. Now, it's those last words that are absolutely critical because the measure of the right claimed, when people walk the dog for twenty years, is a right in due course following registration to use the land for all manner of lawful sports and pastimes. All manner of lawful sports and pastimes, not confined to walking the dog.
So what words are you inserting as to give us the meaning of the measure of the right claimed?
It could be put in various ways, and we put it in our case, my lord. I won't put it as well as we put it in our case. But the idea is that there must be an equivalence between the activities which are carried out on the land during the twenty-year period and the rights which are obtained in consequence of the land being registered following that twenty years of use. There must be an equivalence, the two must sit properly together. And a right of the measure of the right claimed is a right to use the land for all manner of lawful sports and pastimes in an unqualified way. And therefore, that is the way in which the land must have been used during the twenty-year period itself, unlimited, unqualified. That's the right that you're getting.
I mean, I'm not actually quite following this, but because if one took the Oxfordshire case, all that anyone had ever used that ground for, as far as I recall, was for walking a dog. It wasn't really very suitable for anything else. But I suppose in theory, somebody could have come along and cleared an area and decided they would start playing cricket on it. Now, nobody could say that anyone had ever used it in such a way as to indicate that they were claiming a right interalia to play cricket.
Correct. And that is why, that is why the way the thing should actually be analysed is by reference to what the position would have been in this case if Lord Scott's dissenting judgment in Oxfordshire had been upheld. Because then, then the position is that, and my submission would be, you're assuming then that following registration, the rights which accrue as a result of registration are to use the land in the kind of ways in which the land was used during the twenty-year period, but not in other ways. So, in an Oxfordshire type of situation, if walking was all that happened during the twenty years, to walk the dog is all that you get the right to do following the twenty years. So analysed, my point still holds. Because the measure of the right claimed would have to be an unlimited right to walk the dog, an unlimited right to walk the dog. So take this case, Mr George says there's lots of evidence of people throwing frisbees and everything, and I'm not going to analyse it or disagree with him. But the fact is, it's mostly in these cases, dog walking that is the activity. And in this case, I bet, was mostly dog walking. It doesn't matter. Just assume that in this case, that for twenty years, people walked the dog uninterruptedly, except for one thing, one critical thing. And the critical thing was whenever they had to stop walking the dog or walk the dog somewhere else, in order to ensure that the golfers could play the game without interruption, they overwhelmingly deferred to the golfer.
Well, it's not quite fair to say the golfers were not without interruption. I mean, the golfers, the evidence was, and it would be astonishing were it otherwise, the golfers would see somebody about to cross and would wave them over, or they would already be crossing and they'd wait for them. I mean, they wouldn't have to scurry back to the curb, so to speak, for all the world, as if there was a heavy lorry coming.
For analytical purposes, I ask your lordship to accept that Mr Chapman was entitled to come to the conclusion that wherever there was a threatened conflict between walker and golfer, the conflict was resolved in favour of the golfer, in the way that he described. And that accordingly, the measure of the activity undertaken would not be equivalent to the measure of the right obtained as a result of registration, precisely because, following registration, what the public would acquire the right to do is to walk the dog in an unlimited way, unlimited by any question of having to defer overwhelmingly to the golfer.
You say in the future, if it's registered, there will be no need to defer. It would be the other way around. The golfers would have to let the people with the dogs through. And in practice, that would make golf pretty difficult to maintain. Is that right?
So in other words, my submission holds, quite independently of its being the case that as a result of the Oxfordshire case, activities which were confined to walking during the twenty-year periods blossom out into all manner of other activities. I can make good my point that the kind of user has to be of the measure of the right claimed by supposing that the law had been laid down as Lord Scott would have laid it down in the Oxfordshire case and assuming that following registration, all the public would acquire the right to do was to have unlimited dog walking. And what I'm saying is that the principle that I'm seeking to invoke, which is the principle of asking the question whether it can be reasonable to expect the owner to resist the activity during the twenty-year period, simply isn't satisfied in a case where the owner has no need to resist the activity because what he finds is that whenever the land is being used by anybody, for dog walking, say, they make sure that their dog walking doesn't interfere with the purpose for which he wishes to use the land.
Is that proposition consistent with Lord Johnson in the Cumbernauld case? Or we have to qualify that in some way?
It is consistent with Lord Hope's approach to the matter because what one is, Lord Hope approached the matter.
Lord Johnson I was thinking of, maybe you're taking it a different way.
The, it's obviously right that you can ascribe the principle of the outward appearance test in a particular case to the question whether user has been sufficient to give rise to the claim arising. So that you can say that if you're examining sufficiency of user, it's a question of whether the user conveys to the landowner the impression that a right is being claimed. But what I'm seeking to say is that, and that I think is how Lord Hope in the Cumbernauld case was approaching the matter in the passages that were.
My recollection is Lord Johnson said something about there was no need for interference, for there to have been interference with the owner's right.
It's conflict, I think.
Conflict, whatever word it is.
But I want to be sure.
Tab eight in volume one. It's not a point I made, actually, Mr Lawrence, it's Lord Johnson.
Can I just turn to the relevant passage, my lord? Is it in tab eight?
Yes, it's the last page, it's page four in tab eight. And it's the first break in the page, there is no principle.
Yes. There is no principle of law which requires that there be a conflict between the interests of users and those of a proprietor. As Lord President Norman pointed out in Marcus of Buton Macurdy, acquiescence on the part of a proprietor in continued user throughout the prescriptive period without taking steps to assert or accord his right of exclusion will result in the constitution of a public right of way against him. If acquiescence in these circumstances produces such a result, encouragement can even more readily be said to have the same consequences. Must I read onwards, or is it?
No, it's the first sentence really of that paragraph.
I agree. And it's the case we postulate in our case when we say that there are shared user cases where user is more than trivial and sporadic, but where there is no question, this is our category two case, ours is a category three case, it's on the facts here. But the category two case is where there is no question of there being any conflict in practice between the use to which the land is put by local people and the use to which the landowner puts the land.
Well, if you're talking about rights of way, as I said earlier, this problem really doesn't arise, does it? I mean, if your right of way is established, it is understood that the owner can continue to use his land as he did before. Obviously, if he's got stock in the area, he keeps the bull off the area where the public are walking under the right of way and so on and so forth. But the public, for their part, don't stray all over the land. They use their right in a way that respects the owner's position.
And it would be the same if in this case, the way in which the land had been used by the landowner was to walk the dog, say. And I'll give another example of in the Beresford case, for example. If the local authority, out of hours during school days or in the holidays, had allowed parties of schoolchildren to come onto the land or arranged for parties of schoolchildren to come onto the land to play there, then that would have sat perfectly easily with the activities of the local people and therefore not given rise to any situation whereby it would be possible for the landowner to be able to conclude that local people were not asserting any kind of right to what they were doing because of that happy coexistence that on the facts happened to exist in that case. And so, I think my answer to my lord, Lord Roger, is therefore that I do not say that there needs to be any qualification of what Lord Hope's, of that passage from Lord Johnson in Cumbernauld, or there needs to be no question of qualifying that because it applies to a factual situation different from that which obtains in the present case. In the present case, what I'm seeking to submit to your lordships is that an outward appearance test is a fair test to apply in order to ensure that the underlying unifying principle that I'm arguing for of asking whether it's reasonable to expect the landlord to resist the exercise of the right, what I'm seeking to say is that in a case like this, the outward appearance test provides a way of resolving the case that's consistent with principle and produces the result for which we contend. And I seek to just remind your lordships that in the Oxfordshire case, Lord Hoffman identifies, I'm sorry, in the Sunningwell case, he identifies trivial and sporadic user at page three hundred and fifty-seven D and E, D to E in Sunningwell, as not carrying the appearance of the assertion of a right. And in the Oxfordshire case itself, he endorses at paragraph sixty-eight what Mr Justice Sullivan had said in Lang Homes in the various examples that he gave at paragraphs one hundred and two to one hundred and eight. But in neither case did Lord Hoffman say, and he did not need to decide, whether even extensive user might, depending on the circumstances, likewise be incapable of carrying the appearance of the assertion of a right. So here we've got extensive user, but for the particular reasons that applied in this case, we say that that user was just as much failed to carry the outward appearance of the assertion of a right as the trivial and sporadic user in Oxfordshire would have done and as the examples given by Mr Justice Sullivan in the Lang Homes case would have done, of people straying from the footpath and so on.
And is that because of the deference, Alan?
And that's because of the deference. He didn't have to consider a case such as Field Common, where the claimant had made it clear that by his user he meant to do no more than exercise whatever right his paper title gave him. He didn't have to consider a case like ours where the limited activities relied on as founding the right were incapable, as a matter of law, of resulting in a right limited in that way. Where the limited activities relied on moreover, had the appearance of an acknowledgement by the locals that they claimed no right at all. And what I'm saying is that there's no reason at all to suppose. that if Lord Hoffman had been faced with a case like this, he wouldn't have been willing to apply his outward appearance test, the one that he applied to the case of user being trivial and sporadic, to a case where the kind of user which took place was limited in the way described here, and was incapable, as a matter of law, if I'm right, on the interpretation of the rights issue, was incapable, as a matter of law, of giving rise to a right as limited following registration as it was limited before registration. The question that my Lord Roger put to Mr George, as I recorded it, one of his questions yesterday, was whether, post-registration, the owner could get an injunction to prevent people from coming onto the land while he took a hay crop. Now, I don't think that it's helpful for your lordship necessarily to look at facts like that for the purpose of what you've got to decide, as you've got these facts. Could the owner seek an injunction to restrain people from coming onto the course on Championship Day, on Saturdays when the golf was being played, in order not to interfere with the golf following registration? In my respectful submission, the answer is clearly no, they could not. And that is because of the breadth of the rights which follow from registration of the land as a village green, as held by the House of Lords in the Oxfordshire case. The question can be put another way. If there still were a flourishing golf course and the land were registered as a green, could the golf continue? I say the answer is that it couldn't, because now, inevitably, the local people would have preference following registration, and that would mean the end of the golf, effectively.
Sorry, no, no, please.
Well, I was just going to say, in effect, you're saying that before registration, it's a golf course over which people happen to walk dogs and so on. After registration, it's a village green over which people are entitled to walk, and on which people may also golf, but they've got to forfeit the golf round the disporting on the thing. That's really...
That's correct. And, my lord, when I began with those two formulations, one based on, you remember, Lord Hoffman at Fifty-One, and the other, that I said couldn't stand with it, can I just read the second formulation again? The inhabitants have the right, following registration, to use the land in any way which does not interfere with the owner being able to continue to use his land in the way in which he used it during the twenty-year period. Until my Lord Brown, an hour ago, put forward the suggestion that, effectively, golf could continue following registration just the way that it did before, I would, with the utmost possible respect, have said that was a heresy, a heretical interpretation of what their lordships held in Oxfordshire, my proposition too.
Why weren't you prepared to answer the question about taking a hay crop off? I mean, supposing we're dealing with land which was used for agricultural purposes, ordinary things where you require to plough the land in the springtime, and you need to take your crop off in the autumn, or whenever it is, and the owner wants to continue to do that, and plainly while he's got his tractors on the ground plowing, people have to keep off the ground for a while while that's being done, and harrowing and all the other activities. Now, are you saying that if we had people who were walking dogs and so on before registration, that they could insist on walking their dogs and interrupting his movement of his harrow and his tractor and everything else?
Of course they could, if you place on what the House of Lords said in Oxfordshire, the interpretation that I'm saying has commonly been accepted, unless you say that's a case of a, so much a case of low-level activities on the part of the landowner, as to be able to fit in with the law as it was laid down in the Oxfordshire case, and therefore to enable the two activities to continue to sit together post-registration as they did before.
I don't think that either Mr Justice Sullivan or Lord Hoffman could have had in mind that plowing land was a low-level agricultural activity. I think both of them had in mind old turf, didn't they, really, which hadn't been plowed up forever? But which simply you might put a harrow over it, that's not plowing it, and put some fertilizer on it, and take a hay crop. That's a low-level agricultural activity, isn't it?
That probably is, my lord, yes.
But, Mr Lawrence, is there any case where actually the landowner has been held, following registration, to be unable to do that which he had continuously done before?
My lord, the answer is that I'm not aware of one, and I don't know if it would help to say why I don't think there has been such a case. The reason there hasn't been such a case is that these cases are coming to court in cases where, although the landowner may, in the past, have put his land to some use or no use, post, as a result of the demand for housing and development and so on and so forth, the point is reached where what the landowner wants to do is to get planning permission, he gets planning permission to develop his land.
Which would prevent the local inhabitants continuing to use it as previously they had.
Of course, but to meet the real thrust of your lordship's point, it isn't in practice a case of landowners wanting, post-registration, to carry on using their land as they used their land before registration, because before registration, what happens in many of these cases is that landowners have simply been leaving the land, waiting for the time to be right, for them to apply for and to get planning permission and to develop the land. And so, in that sense, one isn't going to get a case that, and in this case, I doubt whether it would have arisen either, if the land had been, if somebody had thought to register the land as a green, it might have been that a way would have been found of the golfers persuading local people to allow them to carry on playing golf without it resulting in a court case. But what causes, of course, the case to come to court is when the landowner is wanting to say, the land is not a village green, what I want to do is to be able now to use the land in a different way altogether, that is going to threaten the way in which the local people have hitherto been able to use the land. And what local people are doing pursuant to the industry which has built up since Sunningwell, is having lost the planning battle, just before construction is due to start, what they do is apply to register the land as a green. And, of course, it puts complete kibosh on all development if it's in due course register, and it's having quite serious effects, your lordship may... And those effects are not confined to a case like this, they include municipal playing fields, where the council has not taken the trouble carefully to appropriate the land for a recreational use, that therefore means that local people have the right to be on it. They apply in cases of school playing fields that are not much used for sport, and which, in practice, are regarded by local people as a valuable local resource for them to walk the dog, and so on and so forth. All these consequences that are set out, are not challenged by Mr George, as set out by us in Paragraph Nine of our case, the school finds that it no longer needs those playing fields because it's closing, it wants to develop the land, it's part of an area of town that is the subject of an application for planning permission, and gets it, and then, hey presto, the land is a village green.
Well, as I mentioned on Monday, my impression was that there was a written question in the House of Lords which was raising this very point, and the indication was that the current statute was in need of further examination in the light of the kind of problems you've been referring to.
Yes.
But for the time being, we have to live with the statute as we find it.
Yes, indeed, and I would say interpret it in a way which produces a common sense result, which you can do.
Yes.
And...
Is there much more you need to say on this particular...
My lord, can I just quickly go ahead and see if there is, was anything... Yes, I wanted to just make this point about Beresford, that it became finally clear in that case which wasn't clear before, and I think it probably was clear before, but Beresford certainly made it clear, that user on the part of trespassers was an essential prerequisite of a prescriptive claim. But, my lord, my proposition is that it does not at all follow that just because users are trespassers, their use of the land, neck v etc., must result in a successful claim. It doesn't do so in the other categories of case, such as where the claimant asserts that the user is to be attributed to his paper title alone, or where the user is trivial or sporadic. I ask, why should it do so when the breadth of the pre-registration user comprehensively fails to match the breadth of the right resulting from registration, where the breadth of the pre-registration user comprehensively fails to match the breadth of the right resulting from registration? And, my lord, I'd just make, if I may, this point, that it would be highly fitting if your lordships felt able to uphold the decision of the Court of Appeal, because it would mean that there were certain kinds of trespass, even extensive kinds of trespass, which could be safely acquiesced in by the generous landowner, without detriment to him or her, and without the need for notices, permissive or prohibitory, expensive fences, or whatever. It would mean that landowners, to whose competing use users habitually deferred, would be safe in their assumption that rights would not be the result of their generosity. See generally our overall conclusion at Paragraphs One Hundred to One Hundred and Four of our case. My lord, the law should encourage generosity and be ready, where possible, to endorse methods of owners protecting themselves which are non-intrusive as possible, which are as non-intrusive as possible. A good example of a thoroughly non-intrusive method of doing that is given by Lord Bingham at Paragraph Five of Beresford itself, where, I mean, if the passage is so short, could I ask your lordship just to look at it? It's Volume Five, at Tab Fifty-Nine. I went so far in Beresford as to submit that you couldn't imply a licence, and very sensibly, if I respectfully say so, the House of Lords said nonsense. Lord Bingham said this, Paragraph Five, bottom of the Page Eight, Nine, Three. "I can see no objection in principle to the implication of a licence where the facts warrant such an implication. To deny this possibility would, I think, be unduly old-fashioned, formalistic and restrictive. A landowner may so conduct himself as to make clear, even in the absence of any express statement, notice or record, that the inhabitant's use of the land is pursuant to his permission. This may be done, for example, by excluding the inhabitants, when the landowner wishes to use the land for his own purposes, or by excluding the inhabitants on occasional days. The landowner in this way asserts his right to exclude, and so makes plain that the inhabitant's use on other occasions occurs because he doesn't choose on those occasions to exercise his right to exclude, and so permits such use." So, in those cases, and they do happen, of the landowner, a few times a year, taking a piece of land that is normally used by the local people, out of circulation, and using it for a local fare, or something of that sort, or in the example that was given, you know, actually locking the land for a day a year, that's an ingenious, and correct, obviously correct, way of being able to arrive at the implication of a licence, the effect of which is to prevent user the rest of the year from resulting...
Well, there's a bit of this in Cumbernauld, in my opinion, in Cumbernauld, you'll find it in Tab Seven, in Volume One, at Page Nine.
Can I just turn that up quickly?
About three-quarters of the way down the page, the paragraph beginning, I respectfully agree, and it's referring to Lord Moncrief's...
"I share Lord Moncrief's concern for the honourable tradition which continues to be observed by the majority of landlords in Scotland, and which makes such an important contribution to the quality of life in this country. But the occasional or irregular use of a path by hillwalkers or by others who resort to the countryside can readily be distinguished from the continuous use of it by members of the public as a route from one public place to another. It seems to me to be clear, on examination of all the later authorities, that a proprietor who allows a way over his land to be used by the public in the way the public would be expected to use it if there was a public right of way, cannot claim that the use must be ascribed to tolerance if he did nothing to limit or regulate that use at any time during the prescriptive period."
Yes, it's a contrast between the kind of thing that you're suggesting, and the extreme position where you've done, it's reached the stage where you really have to stop it in order to prevent the right being acquired.
That's right. And what I'm saying is that in a case, a unique case like this, where the, it's not so much that there's been frequent and regular use by the locals, that there's been, but there has been frequent and regular use of the land by the landowner during the twenty-year period as well. And yet, whenever it's mattered, the local people have given way to the landowner, as if to say, we're not asserting any right here. I'm saying that it would be eminently sensible, if your lordships can do so, consistent with principle and intellectual honesty, to hold that, in such a case, the landowner has nothing to fear from adopting a generous attitude to the use of his land when he doesn't need it himself.
Yeah.
I asked, really, why should the position be any different, where, although the users are not licensees and remain trespassers, the outward appearance is of not asserting any right at all? And, my lord, just lastly this, the form which outward appearance takes is not what matters, it can take the form of words or conduct, but the user whose words or actions fail to communicate an assertion of a right of the measure of the right claimed, to use your lordship's formulation, must not suffer in silence if he later wants to allege qualifying user. He must not continue humbly to submit to the golfer's expectation that users will defer to them. He must do something from which the reasonable owner may know that users are, despite their deference, asserting an unlimited right.
Every so often, they should have walked down the fairway.
Well...
For the first hole.
It could have been different in this case. It could have been, listen, guys, we stand back because we're courteous and decent Yorkshiremen, but understand this, that we choose to do that, and with the exception of one or two people. Even when Mr Davies came to drafting the form, which contains all these tendentious questions people are supposed to answer when they say, oh, yes, nobody gave us permission, and we used the land day and night with the dog and all the rest of it, he took care in formulating Question Seven to state what, which was obvious, only it wasn't put to the landowner exactly like that. But, did you use the land while, of course, and I forget exactly how I put it, but you remember the phrase, giving way to the, giving way to the local, to the golfers when they need to use the land. There was an acknowledgement intersee of what I'm saying was actually perfectly clear to the golfers too, which is that there was no assertion of a right here.
So, they had to pick up any golf ball they found in the middle of the fairway and chuck it into the ruff?
And do what, sorry, my lord?
They had to pick up the golf balls that they found, chuck them in the ruff. I mean, that would be a jolly good way of saying, well, you've got no business to be playing golf here.
Well, no, they wouldn't have had to be as, they wouldn't have had to be as aggressive as that. They would simply have had to have made it clear, I say, on the facts of this case, that although they would continue to defer, it shouldn't be understood that they were not claiming that if push came to shove, they were actually entitled to do something more, which is to use the land in an unlimited way. In practice, of course, you wouldn't have expected them to do that. In practice, nobody dreamt during all these years that the land was used happily together, that would end up in a case in this court, you know, in a village green case. But I say one should bring some common sense to this area of the law, and that what has happened here, and this is my last observation, my lord, is a galloping, is a galloping series of cases where the law has been laid down in a way which has left landowners completely floundering. Now, if that is the position, and if this is the fourth such case, following Sunningwell, Beresford and Oxfordshire, so be it, but I say that your lordships can take the opportunity, consistently with principle, to say, as I would have respectfully said, anyone would say, it's all the facts of this case, you've got... You've got to be joking, a golf, a golf course becoming a village green. Your lordships will find a less kind of colonial way of expressing the point in that, but, um.
But you could have said the same.
I'm sorry, my lord.
You could have said an area of marshland, or whatever it was, scrubland in Oxford, becoming a village green was, you've got to be joking. I mean, frankly, that was my own sort of in- initial reaction to the case.
Well, my lord, it doesn't mean to say that just because the joke, the joke has been, has been resolved one way in earlier cases, that it's got to continue. And obviously, if I can't, um, obviously, if I can't find an intellectually respectful, respectable way.
You've put the point very attractively, Mr.
All right. And then, last thing, my lord, on issues two and three. I'll, I'll leave that to Mr Stuart Smith, if I may. I just say, if, if, if you're in our favour on issue one, um, it, it was so overwhelming that, that Mr Chapman was perfectly entitled to, to regard it as following. He uses the phrase precluded user being as a right, without going into some kind of nitpicking exercise of seeing whether on the facts of this case maybe, despite, despite the outward appearance test being the right test, nevertheless, the, the case should, um, should result in registration of a green. But Mr Stuart Smith, I hope, will put it.
You're leaving him for the nitpicking.
Much, much more elegantly than, than that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my lord.
Mr Stuart Smith.
Lords, I, I propose to deal with a number of points which are discreet, but I hope helpful and connected, if I may put it like that. Um, and, and lord, that perhaps explains why, um, uh, it was difficult to allocate a particular segment of the argument to me until one saw, um, wh- what, what issues were likely to be, um, still, as it were, very much to be addressed. Lord, at the outset of Mr George's case, he, uh, he said first of all that, um, in his three introductory propositions, one of them was that acquiescence lies at the core of all of this description. And that, of course, is a proposition which we accept. Uh, his, his second proposition was, in effect, that, um, the all sort of problems of competing uses could be resolved by the concept of give and take. And on, on many occasions throughout his submissions, uh, when he was addressing, uh, the questions of competing uses or, or questions from your lordships about what the position would be, um, his, his general theme was, uh, well, give and take, and the requirement to act reasonably, uh, will cover all that. Lords, it's probably become clear already as a result of Mr Lawrence's submissions, but I will take it a little bit further, that it is fundamental to our case that the concept of give and take and the concept of reasonableness has no place in when one is considering a right of this sort. Uh, my lord, Lord Hope said, uh, asked whether there was analogy with, um, private rights, and indeed with public rights of way. And lord, the answer, we say, is that the law is quite different.
I mean, you, you accept my point, that if it, if we were talking about public or private rights of way, then give and take, or however you would describe it, would be the way in which you would expect it to be exercised?
Lord, there are a number of, certainly in relation to private rights of way, lord, that's certainly so. In relation to public rights of way, as, as your lordships will, will see, of course, um, implied dedication subject to the continuing rights of the landowner is possible as well. So that, in a sense, solves the problem. But it, it is fundamental to, to our case that, uh, the rights which come with registration as a village green are, as we say, Lord Hoffman clearly stated in Oxfordshire, are unqualified and unlimited.
Yes.
Lord, might I, on the first of those elements, acquiescence, refer your lordships to a, a, a case, uh, which I, I, I think you've not yet, your lordships have not yet referred to, which is Mercer and Woodgate, which is tab twenty-three. Lord, I'm sorry, sorry, volume two, tab twenty-three. As your lordship will see, this was a case of dedication of a public right of way subject to a right to plough. And the issue was whether it was possible to have, uh, dedication of a public right of way subject to a condition of that kind. And it was held, um, that it was. Lord, but the, I draw your lordship's attention to the reasoning, particularly of Chief Justice Coburn and Mr Justice Blackburn, which led them, um, to that conclusion. Uh, Chief Justice Coburn, a- 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 at, um, page thirty, a- after, after saying that, um, about seven lines down, the only proper inference to be drawn is that the exercise of this right of the owner has been coeval with the exercise of the right of way to the public. And again, the proper inference from that is that the pub, right of the public was granted, or the original dedication of the way was made, subject to this right in the owner, periodically to plough up the soil. It must not be lost sight of that there is no obligation upon the owner to dedicate a right of way, nor on the other hand, is there any obligation on the part of the public to accept the dedication. Therefore, if the owner in the present case has said to the public, you may come across this fe- my field as a convenient way, but it must only be subject to my right to plough across it at proper times. And if the public have chosen to accept dedication on those terms, there is no injustice towards them to hold them bound by the terms. On the contrary, and this is, this is the passage which we particularly rely on, there would be great injustice and hardship to hold that there had been an absolute dedication, where the owner had clearly only intended a limited dedication. Lord, Mr Justice Blackburn, at page thirty-one, about nine lines down, says, but in the present case, in whatever way the owner may be taken to have given this right of way over his field, the inference and the evidence is that he did not dedicate it simpliciter as a highway, but he dedicated it subject to the right of ploughing it up periodically. And if this right is inconsistent with the grant of a right of way to the public, then there was no dedication at all. And the present owner has a right to stop up the pathway altogether and so prevent the parish from repairing the path in such a way as to interfere with his plowing. So Mr Justice Blackburn was saying that if the evidence was of what you might describe as a qualified user, and the choice was i- 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 between implying dedication of an unqual- an unqualified right and nothing, then his answer would have been nothing. Lord, um, i- if one then skips over the, um, uh, lord, he's, uh, he, he then quotes from judgment of the court in Fisher and Prowse. Um, and, um, lord, if one comes down to three lines up, which is again a passage that we would rely on. On the other hand, great injustice and hardship would often arise if when a public right of way has been acquired under a given state of circumstances, the owner of the soil should be held bound to alter the state of circumstances to his own disadvantage and loss, and to make further concessions to the public altogether beyond the scope of his original intention. Your, your lordships will, I'm sure, see why we rely on those passages. Uh, and they u- underpin, um, our, our submission that if the, if the facts suggest an inference that you've acquiesced in user on one particular basis, it, it should not, you should not be taken to have acquiesced i- 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 in a user, not, not the width of user in the sense of the width of the sports and pastimes. But, uh, i- i- if you acquiesce in user that has always deferred to you, you're not to be taken to acquiesce, uh, i- 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 in, in user which results in you having to defer to the user.
Yeah.
Lord, so that, that's, um, what I wished to add on the subject of acquiescence. Lord, give and take. Lord, in this context, it's important that your lordship should look at frith and frith. Uh, it, it's remarkable, lord, that the, the whole edifice of the, the argument, that give and take and reasonableness come into play here, rests, as far as one can see, on the single reported decision i- i- is frith and frith. I mean, there appears to be, no other case has ever been cited in support of the concept that a right of this kind, or a customary right, that, that, that it has to be exercised reasonably or within any element of give and take. And the, in our submission, that's simply because it isn't the case. And frith and frith won't support the weight which is put on it, indeed if it supports any weight at all. Lord, that's in volume one, tab thirteen. And it is important to see, because it is the foundation of the argument of give and take, what this case decides. The words give and take, of course, don't appear, nor does the word reasonableness appear.
This is Fitch and Fitch.
This is Fitch and Fitch.
Yes. Yes.
Lord, it's important to see what was being a- alleged here. The plaintiff's allegation was one of trespass. The defendant justified it on the ground that he had, that, that there was a customary right to play lawful games and pastimes. And lord, it's what is described as an assignment, no doubt in the nature of a reply, of unnecessary and excessive damage. Well, that, that's, that's the critical point about this case. It's a case where what was alleged was unnecessary and excessive damage. And, um.
Sorry, I mean, this is, this is the Steeplebumps case where, what, the, the owner played cricket. What, what was the defendant doing?
Uh, well, what is alleged was that they trampled grass, threw the hay about and mixed gravel through it, so as to render the land of no value. I mean, that's the, that's the allegation. So they were either not exercising the, the customary right which they claimed at all, or it was alleged they were doing it causing what was described as excessive and unnecessary injury. And Mr Justice Heath, um, says a- a- at the bottom, the inhabitants have the right to take their amusement in a lawful way. It is supposed that because they have such a right, the plaintiff should not be allowed, should not allow the grass to grow. There is no foundation in law for such a position. The rights of both parties are distinct and may exist together. If the inhabitants come in an unlawful way or not fairly to exercise the right they claim of amusing themselves, or to use it in an improper way, they're not justified under the custom pleaded, which is a right to come into the close to use it in the exercise of any lawful games or pastimes, and are therefore trespassers. His lordship therefore left it to the jury to say whether the defendant had entered the close in a fair exercise of the right or in an improper way. Jury found for the plaintiff that it was used in an improper way. Lord, that case is authority only for the proposition that the local inhabitants have to exercise their rights in a manner that does not cause unnecessary and excessive damage. There is nothing in that case, in my submission, that supports any general proposition of give and take or any proposition that they have to exercise their rights reasonably in the sense o- o- that they have to reasonably defer or coexist with a concurrent user by the landowner.
Well, it, it.
Sorry, I beg no, please go on.
It, it, it seems to contemplate that the, the plaintiff, that was the landowner, was to be allowed to let the grass grow.
Yes.
Uh, in order that he should be able to have his hay crop. I mean, it goes that far, doesn't it?
It's not, it, it does go that far. Um, lord, but the, 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 to, to derive from that case, and in my submission, there is no other, no other case has been cited, to derive from that case that, uh, you, you, that any conflict that might have resulted here between the golf club and the recreational users could be reconciled by some concept of reasonableness or give and take, i- is, in my submission, wholly illegitimate. Though in the case, there's nothing of the sort.
So you're really saying that all you get out of the case is what appears in the very first paragraph? Where a party claims a right, then, um, he must use it for such purposes in a lawful and proper way?
Yes, and I'm not, I mean, we, we wouldn't for a moment, obviously, quarrel with that. Um, I mean, if, um, if, if a local inhabitant, uh, as it were, deliberately set out to obstruct the golfers with no, I mean, had no motive other than that of obstruction, that would clearly be an improper purported exercise of the right. Indeed, one might say in that case, they were not exercising the right at all, but, uh, but in, in my submission, it doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't begin to solve the problem of what the position would be if Mrs Thomas, if I've got her name right, chooses to go on picnic-ing um, in the middle of the first fairway, or Mr Muse continues to play golf on the course as if he were a member. And, um, i- in my submission, that case really takes one nowhere. And one is left with, and I, lord, I, I, I proceed on the premise, and I don't want to argue this again, I proceed on the premise that Lord Justice Dyson and Lord Justice Ricks in the Court of Appeal correctly interpreted, uh, Lord Hoffman in Oxfordshire as holding that the rights of the inhabitants had priority, that the rights of the landowner following registration are only residual, and that the rights acquired on registration are unlimited and unqualified. And, um, o- o- on that basis, um, I, I, I submit that the end result, that one gets it following registration, um, i- is precisely the opposite of what the position was during the period of user. And that is what we say is the capricious result.
Would, would you accept that al- although Lord Hoffman may be the, the, the first, uh, one in, in the particular context of town or village greens to, to have spoken a- a- about give and take, that it, it is an idea which is very common indeed in, uh, the whole law of nuisance, uh, of adjoining coenards having to live together and, to a degree, law of easements and landowner tenancy?
Lord, I accept that it is in terms of, certainly the law of easements, no, there's no question. Although, of course, the, the, e- even in the law of easements, the user has to be exercised reasonably, but of course, that does not mean that, um, the user has to, in a sense, give way to the landowner.
Well, it, it goes at least this far, doesn't it? That i- in, in discussing what might be recognised as a new form of easement. And that, that, there is, I think, quite a bit of authority in saying that a- any alleged easement which effectively deprives the landowner of any useful enjoyment of his land, uh, would be exorbitant and ought not to be recognised by the laws.
Yes, of, uh, lord, subject to the possible sort of difficulty in cases like an easement of parking, which causes, I mean, it causes problems of its own, but, um.
Yes, well, I think that that is one of the contexts in which it has been discussed.
Lord, I, I, I respectfully accept that, but w- w- and the, the public right of way problem, in a sense, can be solved by either saying. by either saying, among other things, that the implied dedication is subject to the continuing rights of the landowner. And that's often been the solution there.
But if I have a right-of-way undefined, an easement of way across your land, then if you have chosen to grow a crop on one piece of land one year, I will be expected to choose my route across your land, while it's not extravagantly long, across a way which doesn't involve trampling down your crop. And if you then move your crop the following year to the other part, and I can then equally easily go across the pit which is now fallow, I will be expected to do it. In other words, I'll be expected to exercise my right-of-way civility in a way which causes least inconvenience to you.
Lord, that may or may not be right. I would respectfully submit, depending on what the nature of the right is. I mean, if the right is to use a given track...
No, no, of course, if it's a given...
Then, then...
Of course, of course. But if it's not, if it's just a general, if it's a right-of-way undefined over your land, then the rule is that I have to exercise civility. And I can't choose to march across a piece of your crop if I can go round the sides.
Well, that's so if it's in the general, because it's relatively unusual to, I mean, a right-of-way...
There are cases and cases in the books about that kind of thing on the law of easement.
I would have thought that's very clearly established. It may be, it depends, probably the northern parts of the country where you have more rough pastures, more like that. But I would have thought that principle was absolutely plain in the rights-of-way context.
Well, it may be, maybe so if the right-of-way is a purely general one, where the person is entitled to choose the route.
Yes, exactly.
But of course, it certainly is not the case if you have a specific
Of course.
right-of-way across a... But we say that the position with public rights like this is completely different because you don't get... What is unique about this case is that you finish up following registration not with a right like a right-of-way, but with competing uses. That's the unique feature of this kind of case. And the concept of reasonableness is, it's very difficult to see how one would, in practice, apply it to this kind of situation. It may be perfectly reasonable, in one sense, for local people to say that they want to play golf on a day when the golf club has arranged a prestigious tournament. If the local people's rights are, as we say they do, take priority, and the landowner's rights are residual, what is unreasonable about local people saying, "Well, we want to exercise our rights this Saturday"?
Well, this is ground that Mr Lawrence covered.
Yes, Lord, it is. And I don't want to cover it again. Lord, the third matter I wanted to deal with is very brief. It's suggested in paragraphs nine and ten of the appellant's case that there's no support for our approach in textbooks or academic writings. Could I just put the record straight on that and take your lordships to volume four? First of all, tab forty-nine. This is Gale. The editor's Mr Gawne turned Mr Justice Morgan. You were referred by Mr George to page two hundred and forty-two of Gale. And might I ask your lordship to look at, first of all, two hundred and forty and the heading there? Qualities and character of necessary enjoyment, and then enjoyment as of right. And, Lord, at the top of two four one, the first paragraph on two four one. In Beresford, it was said that "as of right" did not mean of right, but was closer to "as if of right". User can be as of right even though it's not adverse to the interests of the servient owner. As of right requires one to look at the quality and character of the user and ask whether the user is of a kind which should be enjoyed by a person having such a right. The user must be such as to convey the impression that such a right is asserted. It is not relevant to inquire into the subjective beliefs of the persons carrying on the user. And in particular, it's not necessary for such persons to show that they believe they already possess the right claimed. If a person with the benefit of an express right-of-way uses the way in a manner which is outside the scope of the express right-of-way, but he tells the servient owner that by his use he does not intend to acquire any prescriptive rights outside the scope of the express right-of-way, his user will not be of such a character as to bring home to the servient owner the continuous right of enjoyment wider than the express right-of-way is being asserted. And of course, the case relied on is feel common. And it's observed that the dominant owner's statement may also create an stop if the other elements are open. Lord, I refer to that simply to indicate that it isn't right to suggest that the approach we're adopting has no support in textbooks. And the same, Lord, tab fifty. This is Gray, Elements of Landlaw, again. Your lordships were referred to passage in this. Five two sixty-six is the passage that, this is actually based on state. "It's no bar to the acquisition of rights by long user. The prescriptive claimant suffered from a mistaken belief that he owned the disputed land anyway or that he already enjoyed rights by express grant. If anything, the claimant's misapprehension confirms rather than undermines the claim of right of user. A mere subjective mistake as to entitlement does not deprive the claimant's user of its quality as of right, for the preeminent focus concentrates on the way in which that user is seen by the owner of the land over which the right is asserted." And again, that's a passage that supports a test of outward appearance as perceived by the owner. The authority relied on, my lord, is Bridle and Ruby. Your lordships, that's at tab one, paragraph six. Sorry, volume one, what I should say.
Tab six.
And, Mr Lawrence, correct me, it's tab five. Mr Lawrence referred to...
Sorry, tab, Bridle.
Mr Lawrence referred, your lordships, to the passage in judgment of Lord Justice Parker. The passage cited by Gray is, in fact, from the judgment of Lord Justice Ralph Gibson.
Sorry, I'm terribly sorry.
Tab five, volume one.
No, it's volume one, tab five.
I know, but... Sorry, the footnote I thought in Gray and Gray for the proposition that you were asserting is footnote five, or am I wrong about all this?
Yes, it is. I think it was footnote five.
Yes.
Footnote five is the case of Mr Justice Pumphrey?
Lord, it's page six seven one. I don't know if your lordship's looking at the right page.
Six, page six seven one, yeah. Footnote five...
I think your lordship, there's footnotes halfway down the page.
Oh, I'm going to the bottom. I always, I'm sorry.
Your lordship's looking at footnote at the bottom of the page, perhaps.
I'm so sorry. It's entirely my fault. I go to the bottom of the page for footnotes, not to the bottom of the paragraph. Quite right.
So we're page one seven eight, are we?
No, it's page one seven eight, Lord. And passages, I invite your lordship to note, just below letter E. The, well, Lord, I should perhaps read from the beginning of that paragraph. "The mistake as to origin of the right asserted, the user to be relevant, it seems to me that it must be such as to be capable of affecting the way in which the user of the right is conducted by the claimant or in which that user is seen by the owner of the land over which the right is asserted. The requirement that user be as of right means that the owner of the land over which the right is exercised is given sufficient opportunity of knowing that the claimant by his conduct is asserting the right to do what he's doing without the owner's permission." And, Lord, at the very bottom of the page, final sentence. "I see no reason, however, to attach any significance to the mere fact of such subjective mistakes, which, as in this case, are not shown to have affected the conduct of the claimant or the understanding of that conduct by the owner of the land over which the right is asserted." So there again, one has, we submit, something like the outward appearance test being suggested. Lord, just for completeness, I should say that Bridle and Ruby was cited in an argument in Sunningwell, but doesn't appear to have been, was not, I think, referred to in any of the speeches. Lord, might I finally turn to issues two and three? Lord, all I wish to do on these issues really is to direct your lordship's attention to two passages in Mr Chapman's report. The first one is at page one sixty-five, tab eight. Lord, it's simply Proposition Six in paragraph one nine five, which Mr Chapman deduced from the Lang case. Recreational user which defers to agricultural user is not as of right because it does not have the appearance to the landowner of the assertion of a right. Lord, so Mr Chapman had very well in mind what in law, the relevance, assuming that he was correct in his legal approach and that Lang was correct. He had very well in mind why it was that deference could result in user not being as of right. I mean, he's accused of making a leap from one to the other. But in my submission, the intermediate factor is very well present to his mind. And that is even clearer from his second report, which the lordship will find the relevant passage is at page one hundred and eighty, also in tab eight. And he says, however, second, Lord Hoffman says, "The use of the land made by the landowner may be relevant to the question whether the landowner would have regarded persons using the land for sports and pastimes as doing so as of right. It seems to me that this is the critical issue on the facts of this case. My finding of fact was that recreational use by local people overwhelmingly deferred to golfing use. My conclusion was that such deferral precluded user as of right. This is a conclusion that still seems to me correct and in accordance with the comments of Lord Hoffman." In my submission, in light of that, the argument that Mr Chapman misdirected himself can't be sustained. He knew, he was fully aware of the fact that the question he had to ask was whether the deference resulted in the landowner not regarding people using the land for sports and pastimes as doing so as of right. And he reached the conclusion that he did, but he was applying, plainly applying, the correct test.
It's really issue three, the way issue three is formulated that you're relying on, I think.
Yes, yes.
Issue two is rather peripheral point, isn't it?
Well, our submission was, in our case, that issues two and three, that there is really, issue two by itself really doesn't make great deal of sense. But I didn't believe it would be helpful to anybody if I attempted to formulate what our answer to issue two might be if we were compelled to answer it.
So really, you take them together and you really focus on the formulation of issue three?
Yes, and we say, I mean, this is a judicial review case. And we say that Mr Justice Sullivan and the Court of Appeal concurred in their conclusion that, having found overwhelming deference, Mr Chapman was quite entitled to reach the conclusion that he did. I mean, Lord, it may be that if we're right on issue one, I mean, issue three comes very close to answering itself on the finding of overwhelming deference.
Well, one view might be that you really have to look at issue three in order to understand issue one, because you're focusing on the wording of the statute and the phrase in the statute as of right, which is a prerequisite of registration. That has to be proved.
Yes.
And the neck v neck clam neck precario really falls behind a situation where that kind of thing is proved. And then the landowner said, "Well, I haven't acquiesced in this" because it was either one of these three things. But if you take issue three first, you don't get to that problem. I think I'd be right in saying, because, I mean, you could fail at the very first limb because the user's not significant.
Yes.
Now, that's not your point here, obviously. But then you say, "Well, look at the user and the nature of it and the quality of it. Well, it doesn't meet up with the phrase as of right, and therefore the prerequisite within the terms of the statute isn't met." I mean, that's a rather different approach to the way it's been argued so far. But it's one way of fitting it in, I would have thought, with the wording of the statute. Common law, it doesn't quite arise in that way. But for the reasons I think both you and Mr Lawrence have been advancing, it's rather important to understand the statutory formula.
Yes. Well, Lord, that is so. One has to, and it's also important, we would submit, I think Mr Lawrence really did submit, that while, of course, the words "as of right" have been used traditionally over the ages, it is a composite expression one is talking about here. I mean, it's indulging in sports and pastimes as of right. I mean, so that is what the "as of right", as it were, attaches to the nature of the indulgence. Lord, it may not make very much difference whether one says that it's not as of right or whether what has been indulged in have been, if I could put it this way, qualified activities. I mean, the end result is exactly the same. But really, if deference is irrelevant, then issue three obviously never arises. But assuming that there is an additional ingredient or an overarching element which covers everything, then we would say that Mr Chapman, all we have to say is that Mr Chapman was entitled to reach the conclusion that he did. There's no Wensbury attack on his conclusions.
Yes, I think it was put quite clearly that he had misdirected himself in law.
Yes, well, Lord, I've explained why we say that on the assumption that there is an outward appearance test. I've submitted that he clearly didn't, we say, misdirect himself in law. He applied the correct test. And if he applied the correct test, it's impossible, we would say, impossible to say that he could not reasonably have reached the conclusion that he did if he applied the correct test. Lord, that covers the various discrete matters that I intended to cover. Unless I can help the lordships further, those are my submissions.
Thank you very much indeed. Yes, Miss Crayle, you're rather at the limb. Are you quite happy to stay where you are and have the leg...
My lords, I'm happy if your lordship's happy.
Well, so long as Lord Brown can hear you, that is, she's quite content.
I'll certainly move into the centre if there are any problems in due course. Your lordships have, I hope, in addition to the case in the core volume with which you're familiar, a short addendum which was handed up this morning with five additional documents.
No, we haven't. It's just being handed up now.
I prepared it last night with the hope that it would save your lordship some time in note-taking.
Thank you.
I hadn't at that time, obviously, known what was going to be said by Mr Lawrence and by Mr Stuart Smith, but I'll try to adapt as I go along so as not to duplicate anything that's been said already. Obviously, there is a lot of overlap and common ground, as your lordships will have seen from our respective cases. If I could start by taking your lordship straight to the addendum and return to the charge on the question of give and take and the respective rights of landowners and users post-registration. And I think I can add a couple of things on that which haven't been raised by my learned friends, which may help in your lordships in considering those points. At the beginning of the addendum, we say that there are things which the appellant said at the very beginning of opening about the residual rights of landowners in respect of registered greens and use for their own purposes, which we frankly found surprising and don't accept. For example, the landowner putting up an electric fence to keep his sheep and cattle inside. And in paragraph two of the addendum, we give various reasons why we say that would not be lawful. And we contrast that position with the Sunningwell case, where, as I think Mr. George said in opening, there were a handful of horses, not contained within any corral or electric fence, but at loose, but at large wandering loose over an application site of 10 acres. And those facts appear from the page from Mr. Chapman's report, which are among the additional documents I've handed up. I don't think there are controversy on. Obviously, in that case, there is no interference with lending, with users' rights. But what we say is the effect of Oxfordshire, the last two sentences in paragraph two, and it's that local inhabitants are entitled to use and enjoyment of the whole of a registered green for their sports and pastimes. And that means the whole, it means each and every part, it doesn't matter how large it is. And the landowner can't appropriate, whether temporarily or permanently, part for his own use and then defend himself, whether in criminal proceedings or civil proceedings, for nuisance. He can't defend himself by saying, well, there's plenty of land left for local people's needs.
This raises the issue, I suppose, I'm looking back at paragraph, sorry, subsection four A of the, of the statute, which uses the phrase on the land. You're looking at what is, what they've indulged in by way of pastimes and so on, on the land, and you would follow from that approach that you're saying you have to look at the whole of the land. I mean, after all, the whole of the land is to be registered, and therefore one includes indulging in these pastimes on the fairways and on the greens and everything else. Would that be right?
What I'm addressing now is the consequences of registration.
Yes, quite.
And the rights, say, in your, in relation to each and every part of the land. Of course, we know from Oxfordshire that in order to acquire the rights.
Yes.
It may be that use does not have to have been of each and every part of the land because there may have been a thicket or something like that, and my lords, Lord Roger and Lord Walker will remember that. But nonetheless, when the rights are created.
Right.
My lord, it's important to remember, we say, that they inure over each and every part of the land. And that means that the landowner cannot set a part aside and say, well, you've got plenty of room left for your sports and pastimes, I'm going to set up my golf course on this particular part of this 10-acre site.
I mean, if there's a cricket square in the middle of the village green, it's just, the village green is the size of a cricket field as a whole, there's a square, a moaned, carefully groomed square in the middle. But it's a village green, and the fact is that any, any local can, can go and walk over that and the rest of it, can't fence it off or anything like that.
Yes, absolutely. And I, in order to try and help your lordships further on this, in paragraph four, I try to draw an analogy, and your lordships may wonder where I'm going here, but we'll come to the point in a minute, but I need to set the scene. And Mr. Lawrence mentioned the Open Spaces Act this morning, and he mentioned, I think, the Public Health Act, section 164, and the case of Hall and Beckham Corporation. Section 164 of the Public Health Act, we very quickly turn to that, volume four, tab 47. Enables local authorities to buy or lease land for the purpose of being used as public walks or pleasure grounds. And the case of Hall and Beckham Corporation, which Mr. Lawrence mentioned, is one of the additional documents I handed up this morning. And that was the case where Mr. Justice Finnamore held that the public are entitled, as against the local authority landowner, to go on land held for the purposes of that section and to recreate on it, and can't be excluded. And if your lordships look very quickly at page 728 of the case. Page 728, Mr. Justice Finnamore, in the first complete paragraph at the end, and in the second complete paragraph, said that so long as a member of the public behaved himself in the ordinary way, committing no criminal offence and observing the bylaws, the corporation cannot stop his doing what he likes in the recreation ground. This problem is the crux of the case. Mr. Squibb's argument is right. The corporation are the trustees and guardians of the park and are bound to admit to it any citizen who wishes to enter it within the times when it is open. They can't interfere with any person in the park unless he breaks the general law or one of their bylaws. And Mr. Lawrence referred to paragraph 87 of the Oxfordshire case and the dictor of my lord, Lord Walker, I'm sorry, in Beresford, and the dictor of my lord, Lord Walker in the Beresford case. And those dictor are generally understood, and what my learned friend, Mr. George, refers to as a town and village green bar, as endorsing the approach of Mr. Justice Finnamore. And we probably don't need to go much further into that.
Could you read me the paragraph number again for Lord Walker?
It's 86 to 87.
Yes.
And Mr. Lawrence did, did take you there earlier, we can go back if your lordship's wish.
I'd quite like to see that, if you wouldn't mind, just to remind me.
It's, it's volume five, it's, uh, 59. It wasn't part of the ratio in that case.
So where are we going?
Volume five.
Five, 59.
Terence, we're good.
Yes.
Pages 915 to 916.
Yes.
And it's paragraphs 86 and 87.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
And the, the view that section 164 of the 1875 Act effectively creates a trust akin to that created expressly in the Open Spaces Act, even though it doesn't expressly say so, appears to be confirmed by sections 122 and 123 of the Local Government Act, which again, Mr. Lawrence took you to this morning, where it says that if you comply with these statutory procedures as a local authority, you can appropriate or dispose of land freed from the trust, which is for enjoyment by the public in accordance with section 10 of the Open Spaces Act or section 164 of the Public Health Act 1875. So that seems to confirm that there is an analogous statutory trust under section 164, although it doesn't spell it out in the same way as the Open Spaces Act does. Now, if I'm, if I may come to the analogy with this case, one has the analogy, you would say, of a statutory right to indulge in recreation all over the public park or pleasure ground that one has under section 164. And what one finds is that the local authority landowner cannot exclude the general public from any area, any part of the area held under that section, in order to allow a particular game or recreation to be carried on without express statutory authority. And one finds express statutory authority in section 76B of the Public Health Act's Amendment Act 1907, and that's one of the additional documents which was handed up this morning.
Seventy-six.
Section 76, it should be, it just, it doesn't actually give the, the name of the act on the first page.
Yes.
It says recreation, part six, recreation grounds, section 76. Powers as to parks and pleasure gardens, and then says, and the general word in, the local authorities shall, in addition to any powers under any general act, have the following powers with respect to a public park or pleasure ground provided by them or under their management and control. And the most important one is B, and that's to set apart any such part of the park or ground as may be fixed by the local authority described in a notice board for the purpose of cricket, football, or any other game or recreation, such as golf, and to exclude the public from the part set apart while it is in actual use for that purpose, but obviously for no longer than when it's in actual use for that purpose. And in the subsequent 1925 Public Health Act, and that's the next sheet, section 56, power was conferred on the local authority.
Sorry, what is the statute? We're not told on the piece of paper, it's the 1920?
The first one's 1907, the second is 1925.
Twenty-five. This is, you, you referred it in the text of your addendum.
I referred it in the text of the addendum, definitely.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the power, the additional power was given in respect of pieces of, of the park or ground so set aside to charge sons for using it.
Yes.
And so what we derive from that is that unless you have, where you have a statutory right to indulge in recreation over the whole of a piece of land, whether you're the public generally, or as in the case of a village green, a section of the public, without express statutory authority, the landowner can't set part aside for a specific game or recreation. And it doesn't matter how big the park or pleasure ground is. And so your lordships will see the analogy that we draw with the statutory rights over town and village greens. And my lord, just a reference to the Wimbledon and Putney Commons Act and the bylaws under it, I think Mr. George held that up as, as a model of coexistence. If I could very quickly take your lordship to volume four, at 48. One finds first of all the act. And section 84 of the act is what confers power on the conservators to make bylaws. And one finds on page 26 of the act, and finds that among the things for the regulation, for the, in respect of which bylaws can be made.
Sorry, which paragraph, which section?
This is section 84.
Yes, yes.
And about halfway down, section 84, at the top of the second page.
Yeah.
One finds for the regulation of assemblies of persons thereon and of sports and games played thereon. So that's the power, and then when one turns to the bylaws themselves, one starts at bylaw 28. And bylaw 28 confers on the conservators power to set aside or appropriate parts of the commons for walking or for cricket or football or golf or skating and various other things. And no one shall play at cricket, football, golf, or any other game, et cetera, except on such days or at such times and under such regulations as the conservators may from time to time prescribe. And no one shall abstract or interfere with any persons who are playing or have made preparations for playing at these things, and so on and so forth. Your lordships, I won't take you to them now, but your lordships will see, I think there are no fewer than seven bylaws which regulate the relationship between the golfers and other people.
Statutory give and take.
It's a statute, exactly, my lord, it's not left to chance, it's not left to negotiation. It is very carefully regulated for the very reason that if it were left to chance or negotiation, it would work out very badly.
They take a dim view of golfers who are made to wear, wear red coats, I'm glad to see.
Thirty-three, thirty-four is interesting, but, yes.
Well, Mr. Lawrence lives in Wimbledon, so now he has personal experience of how it works out on a daily basis. But I won't take up time with that now, but, but your lordships will see, the serious point is that these are not matters which are or can be left to people to work out on the ground.
I mean, can you help at all with Hunter Coombe or not?
My lord, I know that Mr. George was giving quite a lot of evidence about Hunter Coombe, but I'm afraid I don't know anything about it, and I really, I can't help on that, I'm afraid.
But I mean, is there a general right in, in local authorities in respect of village greens in, which they own, to make bylaws or to do anything like this? I mean, to, to provide for golf or anything like this?
Local authorities have powers to make bylaws indeed, because local authorities fall into this.
So isn't the answer only if the village green is a common?
This is, this is all quite complicated because local authorities do fall into this.
I know, but your, your answer was, if I may say so, rather vague, I mean, can you do a bit better than that?
Local authorities have genuine bylaw-making powers.
Can I, can I, can I just assist? We've looked at the 1899 Commons Act, which is in volume four, and that applies to commons and includes village greens within the definition of commons, so that there is a power to make a scheme for village greens, and a scheme cannot be made if the owner objects.
Sorry, and which tab is that?
It's tab four.
What? No, you don't.
It's tab 41, and then there was 41L for the rest of the act. And your lordships may recall that there were those regulations which were tab 42, and the actual scheme in the regulations, your lordships find in volume five, at tab 65.
Yeah. Good, does that help, Miss Crayle?
My, my lord, it doesn't, it wouldn't help at all in a case where what we have, as we have here, is a private owner wanting to run a commercial golf course and to continue to do so after registration, which is the situation, obviously, that we're concerned with.
I'm absolutely lost. The owner is a local authority. Sorry, why can't they invoke this legislation to make? I'm, I'm, I'm completely lost.
My lords, I'm talking in general terms about the position where one has a general statutory right of recreation over any piece of land. One example is in the case of town and village greens, which are registered, and another example is under the Public Health Act. And what I was submitting to your lordships was absent express statutory power, one cannot, the land, the owner has not got the ability to set aside part of the land as a golf course or, or to do anything else on it. And the landowner, we would, I would go so far as to say, can't grow crops, can't use it for industrial purposes. All of that is potentially interfering with the general rights of the local inhabitants to recreate. And one shouldn't, in my submission, looking at it from that general point of view, one shouldn't look exclusively at the position of local authority landowners, just because in this case there happens to be a local authority landowner, one's looking at it as a matter of principle.
I absolutely follow that, I mean, of course I follow that.
And one's looking at the generality of the matter. Then, once one starts getting into the intricacies of particular statutory, statutory provisions, obviously the position becomes more complicated. But the, the point of the analogy was to make the general point about the incompatibility between the existence of a general recreational right over land pursuant to statute and the owner's setting aside parts for his own purposes. Or on a charging basis or whatever. And that, that is the, the general point. And it's a large plank of the respondent's case, of course, that the rights which are, the statutory rights over a registered village green are very broad and don't permit landowners to appropriate parts of it for their own purposes.
Now, where are we in the addendum? Are we, are we approaching paragraph five?
We were on paragraph five, but I was now about to take another diversion. We were on paragraph five, but I was now about to take another diversion to refer to the Oxfordshire case, and my Lord, Lord Brown's questions about whether Mr Lawrence was interpreting the ratio of the majority correctly in relation to the extent of the rights. I just want to draw your lordship's attention to Lord Scott's dissenting...
Yes.
...judgment, which is quite a powerful judgment in my submission, deals quite effectively with those questions. That's in volume two at tab twenty eight. And before I look quickly at the headnote on page six, seven, five, and the first, the first paragraph of the headnote on issue one, that's the rights issue, one sees that Lord Scott was dissenting from the view of the majority, that registration gave rise to rights for the relevant inhabitants to indulge in lawful sports and pastimes, extending to sports and pastimes generally, not merely the use which had been the basis for registration. The landowner retaining the right to use the land in any way which did not interfere with those rights. If one comes to Lord Scott's dissenting judgment, one sees that Lord Scott interpreted the scope left for the landowner as very, very narrow indeed on the majority's view. And if one turns to begin with, maybe one's looked already at Lord Hoffman's speech at paragraph fifteen, fifty one, and one should also look at paragraph fifty nine under the human rights headnote.
Yes.
And one sees at the end of paragraph fifty nine, that Lord Hoffman said, "The owner retains his title to the land and his right to use it in any way which does not prevent its use by the inhabitants for recreation." Then one comes to Lord Scott's dissenting judgment, and if one picks up paragraph eighty four. His lordship wasn't happy about the literal construction of section twenty two, and he said he would regard it as a more sensible construction, based on the normally understood characteristics of a green if that were adopted instead. Relevant to notice a class C addition to the previous means by which land may have become a village green was based on the language of prescription. Prescriptive user entitles the prescriber or the general public, if public rights away are being obtained, to a right commensurate with the prescriptive user. So prescriptive user will pass on foot, rise to a right of own foot, and so on. And he says it's a basic principle, turning over the page, of prescriptive use, that the user as of right that's continued for the requisite period becomes the user of right. And he said he thought that the twenty years user contemplated by the section was intended to lead to the same consequence, the acquisition of rights commensurate with the nature of the user, that would match up class C with customary rights under class B. And then paragraph eighty five, "It's only if the literal construction of section twenty two, preferred by a majority of your lordships, is adopted, that the rights issue becomes difficult. If it's correct, any twenty year as of right recreational use of any type of land justifies categorizing land as a green, it becomes necessary to ask what rights are thereby created." And said he didn't think that the tolerance of a yearly bonfire should acquire a wider rights. Said that there wouldn't be a problem if there'd been general recreational use. And reference was, in his opinion, a reference of generality. And he thought the generality would be present if it had been used for all sorts of lawful sports and pastimes. A management problem might arise if a new sport began to be played, posing problems for other users. User for the new sport might be unlawful if it presented unacceptable dangers to other users, but wouldn't necessarily be unlawful vis-à-vis the landowner. And then finally, he could complain only if his residual rights in respect of the green were interfered with, but if the green were the typical town or village green, those rights would be likely to be negligible. And of course, what he described as a typical town or village green, subject to the full array, the right to carry on the full array of pastimes, that is the registered village green under the Act in accordance with the ratio of the majority in this case. So on any registered village green, in the view of Lord Scott, the landowner's rights are going to be negligible. And he returns to the point on paragraph one oh five.
Surely the point he's making at the end there is, if it were a typical town or village green, a real one, as opposed to one of the ones which has been created by the statute, the way it's worked out, if it had been a typical one, then the rights of the owner would actually be negligible, because it would have been actually a user's village green. Maybe taking a hay crop once here or somewhere, but that's what he's saying there. I mean, his whole point was that it should have been construed as only relating to that kind of village green, in which case everything worked.
But on the view of the majority, every green becomes a typical village green. So that applies now to every village green, whatever the activity is carried on during the twenty year period. So in every case, the landowner's residual rights are negligible. And paragraphs one hundred and four to one hundred and five, he returned to the theme and reiterated his dissent from the proposition at one oh five, that registration authorized local inhabitants to enjoy user of the land different in kind from the twenty years user. And then he continues, "Or that would diminish the ability of the landowner to continue to use the land in the manner in which he's been able to use the land during the twenty year period." And so spelling out the consequences for not just local inhabitants in enhancing their user, but in relation to the ability of the landowner to continue to use the land. And he goes on to refer to a consequential loss of any meaningful residual use that the landowner could continue to make of the field. And if registration of land as a class C town or village green were to bring about a diminution of the landowner's property rights, not simply by establishing the local inhabitants' right to go on doing what they've been doing for the last twenty years, but by depriving the landowner of the right to go on doing what he'd been doing, it would be a very real question as to the compatibility of such a legal regime with the landowner's rights under Article One of the First Protocol. And so my lords, in my submission, Lord Scott was very clearly interpreting the view of the majority in the way that Mr Lawrence and Mr Stuart Smith and I interpret it as giving the inhabitants very wide rights, and the landowner as very negligible residual rights.
Yes.
And I think my Lord, Lord Brown asked why hadn't there been any cases about the relationship between users and landowners' uses of registered greens. Of course, Oxfordshire was not decided all that long ago, in two thousand and six. And surprising as it may seem, it wasn't settled before then that people had any rights at all over village greens. So it's unsurprising that actions weren't brought to vindicate them at a time when it wasn't settled they had any to vindicate. And looking back, it does seem astonishing as it took all that time from nineteen sixty five to two thousand and six to establish that there were rights in that historical case. And the third reason is that it's been generally taken to have been settled by Oxfordshire, that inhabitants have the fullest rights and landowners have hardly any rights at all. So I hope that's an attempt to answer my Lord Brown's question. As to that, going back to the addendum, paragraph five, what we ask your lordships to face up to is what we say is the unavoidable position, that a landowner who's been using his land undisturbed for his own purposes, whether they be recreational or whether they be industrial or commercial or agricultural, won't be able to go on doing it if it's registered as a green. His land will be subject to statutory recreational rights of the benefit of the public or a section of the public, and he won't be able to set aside any part and use it for his own purposes, unless of some statutory authority. And aforesore, we say, we've been focusing on recreational use because that's the use here, but it's aforesore either case. And with non-recreational uses, it is much easier to say, oh, well, you can have give and take where the uses are recreational, they can coexist, but it becomes apparent that it would be much more difficult in the case of other types of usage, leaving aside the handful of horses cases. And the other side of the court, and we say, is that the users who throughout the twenty year period have desisted from interfering with the landowner's use of his land, have not been acting in the way that they would have been entitled to act if they'd had recreational rights over the land. And what that entails, to put it in the way that Justice Sullivan put it, the users give and the landowners take would be completely reversed on registration. And what your lordships have to decide is whether you agree with the respondents and the courts below, that that is not how it should be, or whether you agree with the appellant, that there's nothing wrong in it at all, and that's exactly how it should be. What we urge on your lordships is, in the light of Oxfordshire, there isn't a third way. There isn't a third way where neither side's rights are subordinate and everyone lives happily ever after and there's a woolly give and take approach. That just, we say, is not open anymore in the light of Oxfordshire. If I could just say something very quickly about hay crops, and I must confess, and I've shared the bafflement of my Lord, Lord Walker, in this regard, in the sense of the standing crop, because if a landowner is going to have any kind of a crop worth taking, then there's got to be a period of more than a day or two when you have a standing crop which is left in violet, and there's no opportunity for people to play and walk their dogs and do all the other things in it that lawful sports and pastimes entail. And that leads me to submit, and I don't speak for Mr Lawrence and Mr Stuart Smith, but it leads me to submit, that growing, that taking a hay crop is also inconsistent with the rights of recreation over a registered town or village green, as well as the actual processes of harvesting. And I say that knowing about Fitch and Fitch, but Fitch and Fitch was a long time before the nineteen sixty five Act.
Aforesore, if what the owner wants to do is to grow carrots or cabbages on his ground as opposed to grass for hay.
Obviously, that's the least intensive form of use. Anything which is any other form of cultivation would be in the aforesore case.
Yes.
And going quickly back to the addendum, paragraph six, the appellants, of course, say that it doesn't matter if local inhabitants have used the land only at times in ways that fitted in with the landowner's own use. Well, that's neither here nor there, so long as they've used it openly. When they have used it, because the landowner has put to his election, should have stopped them coming onto the land or given them permission, and he's only got himself to blame. And paragraph seven, we say, and this is perhaps the crux of it, it matters very much because the principle of acquiescence, which is common ground, underlies the acquisition of rights by as of right user, requires and entails a symmetry between the user acquiescing and the right of user acquired. And Mr Lawrence has already addressed some length this morning on that, and we entirely agree with those submissions. And paragraph eight, we make the point, and this point has already been made a lot, there's a limited public right of way can be acquired by deferential user. And we also make the point that private easements to use, whether it's traps or pipes, water pipes, or sewer pipes, or whether it's a right of parking, or manner of things that one can think of, but private easements to use whatever it is in common with others who may be or include the servient owner can be acquired if you have shared use during a prescriptive period. And that's a very common situation. And in that case, the use is on an equal footing and it's share alike. But that is very different, we say, from the statutory rights to recreate as are conferred by registration as a green, which are unqualified, unqualifiable, and take priority. And we refer again to Oxfordshire. But just going back to the limited public right of way or a private easement, and to do something in common with the servient owner or, and/or others, and we'd stress that that is not necessarily, or not at all, those situations to do with give and take in practice, because it's part of the legal definition of the scope of the right, which, and that governs the interrelationship between the parties. And it's not just a de facto give and take, it's actually part of the scope of the right. And I should make the point to draw attention to footnote two, where we say that the fallacy in the Meagre article, and you'll remember that Mr George took use of that, and you can read that at leisure, that we say the fallacy is to suppose that there is a category of recreational right which is equal or inferior to the landowner's rights, which users who defer can appear to be acting as if they had, and which they would acquire by so acting. And we say there isn't one, because there is only one kind of right you can acquire by user to recreate on land, and that is the unqualified town or village green right. There's no yes passing, there's no other type of right that you can acquire, recognized in English law at the present time. And if it's the town or village green rights you're acquiring, then that's superior or better as a matter of law than the landowner's residual rights. And we refer to the Thomas and British Railways Board case. And Mr George very graphically described the confrontation between the user and the train, and said the user would defer to the train, but that didn't mean that the British Railways Board couldn't continue to run its trains. And I don't need to take, I don't think I need to take your lordships to the case unless your lordships want to go there, but we simply make the point, first of all, that it was a case where, in fact, the majority of the Court of Appeal found as a fact the footpath came first. So it's not a particularly good example of Mr George's proposition, because that was the finding of fact. The judge had held the opposite, the Court of Appeal had held that he'd been wrong to do that, and he should have found the footpath came first and had priority. But even on the alternative hypothesis, and Mr Justice Goff, I think, held that it was the other way about, but even on that hypothesis, then what it would be is a classic case of a limited dedication. A right is acquired subject to the landowner's right to continue to run his railway. The other thing that I say in that footnote, which Mr Stuart Smith has already picked up this morning, and it's a reference to the Fisher and Prowse case, and the quotation about the injustice and hardship that would arise if an owner of soil who's put up with a certain type, acquiescing a certain type of activity, finds himself, were to find himself subject to a right to indulge in a much wider activity. And if your lordships can read that for yourselves at leisure, then, like Mr Stuart Smith and Mr Lawrence, we also rely on that approach of the courts, that it is monstrously unjust to saddle a landowner with something much worse than that in which he's acquiesced. That's a good colloquial language. It was put much more elegantly by Mr Justice Blackburn, which I commend to your lordships. And we say that monstrous injustice can only be avoided by holding that no rights arise, and that, of course, we say that's what your lordships should in this case hold. To return to the addendum, paragraph nine, the appellant, of course, accepts that if, despite using land qualifying on the tripartite test, local inhabitants had expressly represented they weren't seeking to acquire a right, they wouldn't acquire a right, and they don't challenge the field common decision, the correctness of that decision. And we say that if an express representation can reasonably be relied on by the landowner to defeat a claim, so too should a landowner be able to rely on an implied representation by conduct that no right is being asserted, as for example, when users always make themselves scarce when the landowner comes along and does on the land whatever it is that he wants to do. And he should be entitled to rely on conduct, because it's the conduct and the outward appearance that users' conduct gives to a reasonable landowner, which is critical in this area of the law, not what they're thinking, it's not what they're saying, it's what they're doing. And we say that the landowner should be entitled to take that conduct at face value and rely on it as evidence that they're not asserting a right or seeking to claim one. And we say that it would not be fair, it would be the monstrous injustice, if for twenty years users have subordinated themselves to the landowner, and then on the first day of the twenty first year, they turn around and say, ha ha, the boot is now on the other foot, here's our town or village green application, and very soon you're going to have to be... subordinating yourself to us. And I'm not entirely sure, I didn't really at all follow Mr George's suggestion, that the field common type case might be attributable to clam. But his smokescreen, to metaphor, we say, would be equally applicable to the sort of case as I've just postulated now. And my lords, paragraph ten of the addendum. If a landowner erects a notice which says, and I'm not aware of any case where a landowner has actually erected any such notice, but if a landowner were to erect a notice, you may recreate on my land except when I am playing golf or harvesting hay or whatever the activity may be, then the appellant would say presumably that use by the local inhabitants at other times than when the activity was being carried on was permissive. And the same result might well follow if the notice said, keep off my land when I am playing golf or harvesting my hay crop, because that would just be putting it the other way around. And then again, if the landowner puts up a fence around his land, the electric fence to keep people out when he's doing whatever it is that he's doing and then takes it down again, then the user at other times would presumably be characterised as permissive following the approach that was taken by Lord Bingham, my lord, Lord Walker in Ferrisford, because you're excluding them or you're closing the land to them. But in the case before, your lordships and analogous cases, local inhabitants are voluntarily excluding themselves, because they're withdrawing from the land or they're not going on to it while the activities are in progress. And the perhaps a million dollar question is, must the landowner then take further steps by way of notice or fencing? Or can he just reasonably take the view that such steps would be OTOs, and he can rely on their not acting as if they were asserting a right to use the land in priority to him? And we say, and the first respondent says, that it's the latter. And if I could very quickly, maybe this is not the time for it, I was going to quickly try and put three hypothetical scenarios before your lordships and say that the obvious way to deal with why rights would not be acquired in those cases would be by the route that the Court of Appeal has taken in this case, and to ask rhetorically, well, if not, why not? But I see that it's five to one, and I'm in your lordship's hands as to whether to embark on my three hypothetical scenarios now.
I think if you can finish by lunchtime, that would be very helpful.
Finish the three hypothetical scenarios or...
Well, finish your address, really, if you wouldn't mind.
Right on. Very, very quickly sketch out the scenarios. The first is if the landowner uses his land all day, every day for his own purposes, but every night he goes home and local people come and walk their dogs over it. Imagine there are lots of them walking their dogs all over it, so there's got a significant number, and they're doing it regularly, they're doing it every day, and they're doing it openly. So it would seem to pass Mr George's test. Situation two is a school playing field. It's used during weekdays in term time, perhaps Saturday mornings for matches, but in the evenings and holidays and on Sundays, the locals come on and play their frisbee and walk their dogs and so on. Third situation, we go back to the hay crop. It isn't just the harvesting, but it's the period when you've got the standing crop and that's being left alone. That's already, so that's the third situation. And so we would say, of course, that the local people were respecting the crop and deferring to the crop as it were, as well as the farmer. In all these situations, the, it would appear Mr George's tests are met, you've got twenty years' user for sports and pastimes, it's regular, it's extensive, it's neck clam, neck v, neck precario. And the land has got open access, it's not fenced. And people could get on it at the times when the activities are going on, but they don't. They overwhelmingly, invariably don't, they choose to stay off. And your lordships can add this factor, you can imagine local people actually saying, quite honestly, not only was our conduct deferential, but we very definitely were deferring, it was quite deliberate, we didn't want to interfere with the landowner's activities, they were very beneficial activities, and we deliberately stood back to allow them to be conducted. However, we never made the field common mistake of actually saying to the landowner, we're not trying to acquire a right. We kept quiet, we were very careful not to say that, or we just didn't realise that saying that would make any difference, but it was quite obvious that's what we were doing, but we didn't say it. So now we can claim a right, because we didn't actually say we were deferring and that we weren't intending to assert and acquire a right. My lords, I would submit that in none of those cases, despite Mr George's tests apparently being satisfied, would it be right the land should become a green? And we say the obvious and probably the only route to the conclusion it shouldn't become a green is the route the Court of Appeal have taken in this case. And my submission is that what's wrong with Mr George's analysis is it focuses entirely on local people's conduct when they go on the land, to the complete exclusion of looking at their conduct when they refrain from doing so.
I should have thought if you deliberately walked your, used the land only at night, and you deliberately didn't say that you were, you didn't make any assertion that you were claiming a larger right, and you deliberately did that, which is what you built into the scenario, you deliberately kept quiet about it, I think that's clam. Because that is misleading, that is something which is clam.
Well, maybe not, in the sense that it's not necessarily on the cover of darkness, because in the summer it's perfectly obvious, the lights on the night.
But if you go on, deliberately go on at a time when you know the person isn't going to be there or wasn't going to be around, and I'm talking about deliberately, and you have to do this with the deliberate intention of acquiring a larger right and so on and not revealing it, that's clam. Different matter, perhaps, if you simply happened to go on every night in the evenings rather than during the day, that's different. But if you do it with a bad intention, I think that brings you into the clam category.
It wasn't, I wasn't intending so much to postulate a bad intention as quite, as a very decent intention. The landowner needs the land during the day, we only need it at night.
But you're deliberately keeping quiet about, about, you said and deliberately don't say that, say that you're looking for a larger, that you're not seeking a larger right. It's that part which gets you into difficulty. If all you do is go on at night, fair enough.
Well, when I was saying that they say we didn't make that mistake, that was really on the first day of the twenty-first year, I'm not suggesting that they were thinking like that during the twenty years. I'm sorry, that's on the first day of the twenty-first year when they realised that maybe they can apply to have it registered as a green, and then they say, oh, well, now we've been advised, we've taken legal advice, we know about field common and so on. I wasn't really, I wasn't intending to suggest that there was some deceptive intention during the period.
Yes.
That it was done in all innocence during the period and done in a way which was deferential to the landowner, as by analogy with this case. My submission is simply that in all of those cases, the important thing is to look at the conduct when they're not going on the land as well as when they are going on the land. Mr George's approach is to focus solely on when they do go on the land and say, well, that was open, et cetera. And there were plenty of them. So that gives the appearance of a right. We say you must look at it in the round, you must look at the conduct when they're not going on the land, and take the approach the Court of Appeal did. And the final point that I'm making in the addendum are really referential back to the case, and paragraph eleven. We take issue with Mr George when he says that the outward appearance of asserting a right is invariably given by open engagement in the relevant activity. I think he was asked, I think by my lord, Lord Roger, well, what was the Court of Appeal wrong in paragraph thirty-five of the judgment to invoke the outward appearance test? And then he gave two answers, and my submission, neither convincing. And the first was, well, yes, it was wrong, and then, no, well, maybe not wrong, but it means exactly the same thing, or it's a concomitant of neck v, neck clam, neck precario. And we say very quickly two things about that. One, why if it merely means the triumph of the triple test, why not just say so? Why employ the more general expression of asserting a right at all? And we say it doesn't account either for the coupling of quality with frequency and continuity of user, I'm sorry, quantity, it should say quantity, quantity, frequency and continuity of user with the quality and the character of user under the appearance of asserting a right umbrella. We say the appearance of asserting a right umbrella is much bigger, and that's developed in the case. I refer to Simpson, Attorney General, and you'll see what we say about that, invite your lordships to read that, and invite your lordships to read what's said in paragraph thirteen. And just then, a couple of points arising in relation to our case following on from Mr George's submissions. My lord, one point that we would say that Mr George did not deal with at all, let alone unsatisfactorily just skated over, if I may respectfully say so, was what Lord Hoffman meant in the sentence in paragraph fifty-seven of Oxfordshire when he said, no doubt, the use made of the land by the landowner of his land during the twenty-year period may be relevant to the question of whether it appeared to be using it as of right. And Mr George didn't offer any explanation, didn't grapple with that or offer any explanation of why it was that Lord Hoffman said that or what it is he could possibly have meant. And in our case, you'll remember, my lords, we analyse carefully what Lord Hoffman says, make the point that he was criticizing certain things that Mr Justice Sullivan had said deliberately, and it would seem, didn't criticize that, and could be taken therefore to be endorsing it, and that we rely quite heavily upon that, because it's his exegesis of as of right in Sunnywell, which is said by Mr George to show that all you need is neck v, neck clam, neck precario, and yet it's he who, we say in Oxfordshire, quite clearly contemplates the correctness of the Sullivan approach in Lang Homes. And Mr George didn't deal with that, and we respectfully suggest that it may be because, obviously your lordships will hear him in reply, he doesn't have a very good answer to that point, and your lordships have our submissions in the case on that. On the second and third issues, if I could just, leaving the second issue aside, which is not an issue, it's an academic issue, on the third issue which is being focused on, if I could just say that Mr George was painting a picture of this golf course, which we say is somewhat unrealistic. And the reference to hundreds of users by Mr Fletcher, which was mentioned, has to bear in mind, he wasn't saying there were hundreds of people there all at once queuing up to throw their frisbees while someone was teeing off. And he was a member of the club for twenty-five years, one has to remember that and put it in perspective. And in my submission, the picture that Mr Justice Sullivan had of the scenario reading between the lines is the one that one finds in his judgment, I think it's paragraph thirty-three, and I think it's either thirty-nine or thirty-seven, where he draws together the threads about it being a busy golf club and having the first eighteen holes to practise around the clubhouse and so on and so forth, and deduced it was the busiest part of the course, and drew on the findings of fact of the inspector about the numbers of members of the club and so on and so forth. And lords, just to get the whole thing in balance, I would urge your lordships to remind yourselves of the findings of fact of the inspector at paragraph one seven one, and to keep an eye on what Mr Justice Sullivan said. This golf was not a low-level activity, it wasn't like the low-level agricultural activities that Lord Hoffman, perhaps in the next sentence in paragraph fifty-seven of Oxfordshire, was saying, well, I don't see why they should stop it becoming a green. If they were low level, if they weren't inconsistent, this is high-level activity. And we say it's plainly inconsistent if someone doesn't give way, and the users did overwhelmingly give way, that was plainly a finding of fact, and we say one to which the inspector was entitled to come. My lord, you have what we say in our case about that. And just in paragraph twenty-nine of the case, there's an erroneous double negative, which I ought to correct in the second sentence. The point that's made in paragraph twenty-nine of the case is a point that it needs to be borne in mind what deference means, and deference means, the ordinary English word, what it means is submission to or showing respect for or according priority to. And the last of the additional documents I handed up this morning, although I'm sure your lordships don't need it, is a make concise Oxford English dictionary that backs up that point, but your lordships don't need it because it's an ordinary English word. And the point that we make in paragraph twenty-nine is, Mr Chapman is to be taken to be using an ordinary English word in its proper meaning. And what he found was overwhelming deference, and I, we say, that overwhelming submission to, showing respect for, according priority to, not just physically getting out of the way, and the erroneous double negatives did not mean simply to say, it should have said unmeant simply to say at the end of paragraph twenty-nine. Mr Stuart Smith has made the point, there was no misdirection in law, he's taken to the paragraphs where Mr Chapman plainly directed himself correctly, according to Lang Homes and Oxfordshire. My lords, unless there's any further ado, my submissions.
I don't think so. Thank you very much indeed. Well, Mr George, two o'clock.